Proclamation, the West Orange Trail Stakeholder Task Force. Like to do, well, I've been working out with Joe Dunn for a lot of time here. Gosh, how many years has it been, Lake Apopka? Six years. And even done a couple of rides along Lake Apopka with him. Not the forty mile route, just the eight mile route. But had a great time and what a passion he has for Lake Apopka and the trails that are around Apopka. So we've got a proclamation we want to read, then we're going to have him come up and say a few words, and we'll grab a picture with you if you don't mind, Joe. And so the proclamation reads, whereas the West Orange Trail, hereafter referred to as the Trail, is a crown jewel of Orange County, and whereas the Trail is essential to the well-being of our community, and whereas the Trail was critical to the physical health and mental well-being of our community during this pandemic, and whereas the Trail attracts visitors to the area to our economic advantage, and whereas the original character of the Trail was canopied and rural, which should be preserved and restored, and whereas a West Orange Trail Stakeholder Task Force has been created to actively protect the original character of the Trail through common design standards and overlays, and whereas the Task Force also plans to coordinate restoration of canopy gaps that have been created by development along the Trail, and whereas the Task Force will include Orange County Government, City of Apopka, Town of Oakland, City of Ocoee, and the City of Winter Garden, and whereas the Task Force also plans to collaborate with local not-for-profit organizations, including Healthy West Orange, Bike Walk Central Florida, Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce, West Orange Chamber of Commerce, and Friends of Lake Apopka. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby resolve to actively support the objectives of the West Orange Trail Stakeholder Task Force and to actively participate in the preservation and restoration of the original canopied and rural character of the West Orange Trail. With that, come on up, Joe, give a couple of comments and show us. I know you've got a map for us there, and then I've got a map as well.
Thank you so much, sir. I really appreciate it. And first, I apologize for my voice. Allergies right now are just driving me absolutely crazy. But it probably hurts you more than me to speak. I'm president of Friends of Lake Apopka, and as the mayor said, we've been working closely with the City of Apopka for the past six years or so. West Orange Trail is incredibly important trail, not just because it's a backbone within West Orange County. It's standalone, it is incredibly important. But it's also constantly ranked in the top ten trails in the state of Florida. It's also a key element of the Coast to Coast Connector that goes from Titusville to Pinellas, and it will be a key element of the forthcoming Lake Apopka Loop Trail. So Orange County Parks and Rec is in the process, an engineering stage, of connecting West Orange Trail to Magnolia Park, and Mayor Nelson helped initiate that when he was Commissioner Nelson. And then last year, on the west side, there's still a road section from Green Mountain Scenic Bypass down to the Hancock Road Trail, and we were able to get the state legislature to put up $2 million for Lake County to start connecting that. When that happens, there'll be a forty mile loop around Lake Apopka, and I guarantee you that cyclists from all over the country will come here and want to do that forty mile loop, especially as part of the Coast to Coast Connector. So as I've been riding the West Orange Trail for the last twenty-six years, started in 1995, it went from NIMBY, "Don't build the trail in my backyard," back then, to now everybody wants to live on the Trail. So when I ride it four or five times a week now, and I go around every corner, there's a new development. And I noticed that those developments were getting right up against the Trail, and we were losing that canopied rural flavor. And I'm not saying I don't want an urban trail. I'll take an urban trail over no trail any day. But that's part of what drew people to come here, was that rural character, the canopied. So we developed a three-step thing with the Task Force. We partnered with, first of all, Orange County Parks and Rec, because they own the Trail, literally, that's their charter, with the business community, Apopka Area Chamber, West Orange Chamber, and with the municipal entities that all abut the Trail, and said, okay, let's first agree that we want to protect that rural character. That's what we're doing here right now, and I appreciate that so much. Secondly, we get the planners in a room, and we have a meeting, and we say, well, what are your standards for Apopka? What are your standards for Winter Garden? What are your standards for Oakland? When somebody wants to build on the Trail? Because everybody has just a little bit different nuance. And so we're collaborating on how we can raise awareness about trailside development going forward. So we don't do any more gaps on the Trail. But we do ask developers to leave some forested land right next to the Trail. And a perfect example of that is the Orange Technical College West Campus that's being built across from Ocoee High School. We sat down with them and said, look, you're right across from Ocoee High School. Don't go run right up to the Trail. Leave those trees, it's all wooded. So those are the kind of things that we can do. And then the third thing, the last step, is there are gaps along the Trail where it's not canopied anymore. So organizations like the Friends of Lake Apopka will provide muscle and volunteers. Different nurseries will provide the material, they'll give us the trees. Then the exciting part is keeping them watered for years so that they stay alive. So in a nutshell, that's what we're trying to do, to make sure that we have this crown jewel, that we protect it, that we restore it, and we do it in a formal way by collaborating with the municipalities, with the business community, and with our social organizations. So for that, I thank you very, very much for your support, your continued support over these many years for Friends of Lake Apopka and our Trail system.
Super. Any questions for Joe? I just want to show you one. Can you flip the next slide, just to show you? Thank you, Rob. This is what he's talking about, but just wanted to show you. I had a meeting last week with Leslie Campeone from Lake County and Commissioner Moore from Orange County. There we go. Just to kind of highlight, we've got, Lake County now is kind of, they put up the money to finish the Lake County side of the West Orange Trail to get it all the way to the Orange County line. So what we're going to be trying to figure out a way to is to fund, it won't be city, it's in the county, but you know, help the county to complete this project, which will basically be from where it ends there at, let's say, Lester Road, all the way to the Lake County line. So just want to show you that little gap there that's, you know, with what Lake County's doing, that's the only gap we'll have now in the Trail from Oakland all the way to neighborhood lakes in Lake County. So it's an exciting time to be this close to having a completed West Orange Trail. So with that, why don't you come on down, let's get a picture with Joe Dunn.
I follow his page, so I finally get to meet him.
Okay, Edward, on the agenda, anything to need to?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
All right. Okay, Susan, public comment?
We do, we have Bill Worthington.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. My name is Bill Worthington. I reside at 717 Trailwood Drive, which is in the county. But I've lived in the Apopka area for forty-eight years. Taught high school, and some people up there on the dais recognize me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I didn't plan on this, otherwise I'd address more appropriately. I have a big concern about the road situation at Wakava Springs Road and 436. A week and a half ago, I read in the Apopka chief that there were plans to open the recently-built median strip that runs north from 436 along Wakava Springs Road. They were going to open it up and also add a traffic light. That median strip was put in by the county a year and a half, two years ago, to help alleviate traffic problems there. It helps some, but we still have backups at peak traffic time. As I said, I've been here for forty-eight years, and I travel that road frequently. And at peak traffic times, if you're southbound on Wakava Springs Road, you will back up in that left turn lane all the way till there's no more space. And it takes two traffic lights to get through onto 436. And the same situation you're encountered if you're northbound on Piedmont-Wakava. Traffic will back up, all the way back to past Fudd-Ruckers and Marcos in the afternoons. I don't travel that way in the morning, so I don't know. But we've got tremendous traffic problems around here. And I think that this situation where they're going to open that median and put a traffic light in for one business that is in that shopping center is going to lead to monumental traffic problems in the future. Thank you very much.
Pam, I don't know if you want to address that at all? Pam's our traffic engineer. I mean, it's not just for the sprouts, it's also for the whole shopping center. But I know that Pam's been working with Orange County on this project.
Orange County decided to close that, and it has been a couple of years ago. And yes, I would agree, there's a problem there. But what I would say to you is that the traffic signal is going to function in an unusual way. I haven't seen this before, but it's a very innovative design. What's going to happen is it's going to turn that entrance into a right-in, right-out, left-out. Normally you have a left-in, but we're going to do a left-out. The signal at 436 in Piedmont-Wakava is 190 seconds. So during that 190 seconds, the new signal will cycle fifteen seconds twice. And it's coordinated well with the 190 seconds at 436 in Piedmont-Wakava. And what you need to understand is that signal belongs to DOT, and it's under Orange County's maintenance, and DOT dictates what this timing is. But they've become more flexible. So I think what we need to do is let this signal get installed, and of course, Orange County has full authority over it. And then we may need to tweak the cycle of both signals to make sure. I'm hoping that it alleviates some of the problems that you're describing. I know what you're saying. But there is a lot of traffic out there, and there are only so many things we can do. And I think that this is a safe solution. And Orange County put a qualifier in there. If it doesn't work for some reason, if it doesn't have the effect that we think, and they determine it's unsafe, and the developer accepted this, at their expense, they will remove the signal and go back to just having it closed off. But what they're trying to do is to get access for the people, there's a lot of them, that come south and want to turn in there, and then want to go back up north. So that's the main reason. It's really not going to affect anything south at the 436 Piedmont-Wakava intersection. That is just what it is. I mean, there's just a lot of traffic there, and only so much concrete we can put down.
Okay, Bill, good? You understand, so we're, okay?
We've had a conversation, and I've asked him, if it doesn't, if he doesn't seem like it's working, it'll be up in probably within a year, call me, and we'll talk about it, and we'll see what we need to tweak. We didn't talk on the phone?
I have not spoke to you about this.
Okay. Well, somebody called me with the same concerns.
441, left turn on Park Avenue, some time ago. People are turning on CBS from the left turn lane across the W on the line.
Yes, and I sent PD out, I asked PD to go out, and they did go out and run some, they were writing some tickets for a while.
You told me the road belonged to the state, there's nothing you could do.
441, yeah. We are making some improvements, not exactly there, but again, there are only certain things that we can do.
Why don't you get her number, Bill, and you can give her a shout and kind of go through it with her? Yes? Yeah?
I think you might have my number already, right? You have Pam Richmond. I'm online if you need my number.
I just came from the Verizon store.
You need to, we really need to be at the mic, Bill, thank you.
I just came from the Verizon store on the other side of town, and turning out of that Lake Doe entrance, right-hand turn only. And that's the situation in many places in the City of Apopka. When you, I don't know the name of the street, but if you're in the Hungry Howie's parking lot, and you want to enter back onto 441, you have to turn right at both the intersection and their exit from their business. So I don't see anything wrong with people that are going to that shopping center, patronizing whatever store is in there. If they turn in from northbound Wakava Springs Road, and they want to leave and go back north, they can turn right, go to the intersection, turn right and go down a little ways and make a U-turn and come back. Or there are other access roads, such as Vota, or not Vota, Thompson Road, that will bring them back headed north. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
We have Gary McSweeney.
Thank you. Nice to talk before you again. First of all, I'll be brief, but a comment, Stony Brook West Golf Course. Mayor, you were good enough to put on a presentation with Dennis.
Armstrong.
Armstrong, yes. And he was very informative, went through chronologically the two, two-and-a-half-year process that it took them to get through the golf course, which was fascinating, and those of us at Rock Springs Ridge can truly relate to the process. It's not easy. They were a little bit different than us. They went through foreclosure, bankruptcy, then a purchase, and it is, they were supposed to close, I guess, on that day of the meeting, what he said, but apparently it got delayed a little bit. And it was just interesting to see that process run its course. And the two takeaways, he said at the end, which was nice of him to do that, out of all the chronology, he said, these are the things to remember. Number one, use the best attorneys you can, the best advice that you can get from the best people. And the attorney, Rock Springs Ridge, is Kurt Artiman, who is with me here today. And he's also the attorney for the City of Winter Garden, and helped and orchestrated this process all the way through. And the second takeaway that was notable was own the land. Buy the land. If you don't own the land, you can't control the land, and you're subject to whatever is done with the land. So with that in mind, again, I thank you. I think it could have been a better turnout, but I think those that were there were appropriately needed to be there.
And just for everybody else that's out there, it is on the city website, not only the video, but we've also got the notes. He gave me the notes, and the notes are also on the city website, if you want to go to that.
Yep.
So that should be.
And that was, that was up the next day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was right away, so appreciate it. The second is to give you a status of the Rock Springs Ridge HOA vote, which I'm sure you probably have heard by now. This vote was put together under Florida statutes with a quorum represented as defined by Florida statutes. And it was to acquire, it was to propose to sell the Kelly Park land for the acquisition of the golf course lands, and everything in between that. Thirty days ago, we established a membership vote by statute, and they had to go for thirty days. And on October 4th, I think that was the 31st day, we set the meeting up. And after that one month, we met at the amphitheater to have our vote. The vote concluded with a quorum of 694 people voting out of the community. And 571 were for the sale of Kelly Park to secure the purchase of the golf course lands, and 123 no votes opposed that. The percentage is 82/4 and 18/18 again. So I think there have been questions what the majority of the opinion of the community is, and I think that exemplifies it pretty accurately. And it does also reiterate the over 2,000 votes we got for our petition drive back in October of 2020, that basically was an overwhelming success as well. I'd just like to make a difference between Stony Brook West and the Rock Springs Ridge HOA vote. And that is, in that case, for better or worse, the city ran the entire acquisition process, ran it, paid for it, did not assess the HOA anything. And in the end, when they will close on it, which is probably this week, they will in fact turn it over to the HOA for an assessment payment to the residents. In Rock Springs Ridge, it is different here. We have self-financed all of our legal and procedural costs. And a lot of that is guarded around the fact that the golf course has Co-Lake located on it, most of our open recreational lands. And with that course being sold away, we are void of any of those lands. And that is the principal reason why it is so important for Rock Springs Ridge to secure the golf course lands back. And that does include the Harmon Road property as well. And I understand yesterday that you've had some action on that property. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about it, but.
Well, I've got your pastor four minutes, so if we want, maybe somebody else will come forward. Is anything else, I mean, are you pretty well done?
Yeah, yeah, I just.
Do we have anybody else, Susan?
Kurt Artiman.
Okay, well, we'll have Kurt come up, and then if somebody else maybe want to sign in and speak on the, I could talk about it, but he's in the audience, I just assume he can talk about it. Why don't you go and get Kurt? Hey, Kurt Artiman.
Hey, Mayor, how are you? Commissioners, good to see you all. Kurt Artiman with the Fishback Dominic Law Firm, 1947 Lee Road, Winter Park, Florida, 32789. I'm here representing the Rock Springs Ridge HOA at the request of the President Gary McSweeney. Just, I'm really here to just give you an update of where we are, because it has been, as you all know, a long process, there's ongoing negotiations and how this is going to work. I do not represent the golf group, but the golf group is represented by a fellow named Chad Barton. Some of you know him, I know the mayor has had communications with him. The mayor's been very diligent about making sure these meetings happen. The city attorney and Ed Bass have all been involved in multiple meetings. But here's where we are today. The golf group, and I've got an email from Chad to Gary McSweeney confirming this, and I'll hand it out in a little bit. The golf group and the HOA are finalizing a three-way agreement between the HOA, the golf group, and the city for the city commission's consideration, city staff and city commission. And the way that would work is our HOA would pay the city $2.5 million approximately for the Harmon Road property, roughly 32-acre Harmon Road property. The city then would convey that Harmon Road property to the golf group. Simultaneously, the golf group would convey the 319-acre defunct golf course to the HOA. So that is the essence. And it's really two real estate transactions, one between the city and the golf group for the Harmon Road property, and one, a separate one, between the golf group and the HOA. So it's a pretty simplistic process, but it requires two. And your city attorney has not seen that, because we've not provided that to him or to you. The golf group's attorney, I've been in communications with as recently as yesterday and this morning. So we will have that agreement for your consideration. You may not agree with it, I expect the city attorney, and you all will have some suggested changes. And you may say, we don't like it, but we will, because we've heard comments from the commission that we have not seen anything like this. So we're getting that to you. In any event, I think that's important for you all to know where we are in this process, so that you don't have misinformation. Gary McSweeney just mentioned the 82% plus vote by the residents that were there and by proxy for the sale of the 51-acre Kelly Park Road property to a third-party developer. That also will be a contingency for the overall swap to work. But I didn't want to confuse you, because that sale would be, that would happen, we'll use a portion of those funds to pay to the city, so the city would then be able to convey to the golf group the Harmon Road, and then the golf group convey to the HOA the 319 acres. One important point that I know the commission and your staff, of which you're aware, is the tower, the communications tower. So Chad Barton sent Gary McSweeney an email confirming the following. And I'll read it, but then I'll give you a copy of that email. Basically, Chad, as the representative of the Rock Springs Ridge Golf Club, which we call the golf group, buys into this, they're working on this exact deal I just described to you. But then the important point, the most recent important point for you all, I think, is the following, from Chad Barton to Gary McSweeney this morning. As the new owner, assuming this happens, as the new owner of the Harmon Road property, the golf group, that's the current owner of the golf course, is willing to allow the city continued use of the communications tower site for replacement of the existing tower with a new self-supporting monopole-type tower so that the new tower and equipment power utility structure can remain on the Harmon Road property. The golf group, that's Chad Barton's group, will accommodate the development of the Harmon Road property around the new monopole tower and equipment power utility structure, and save the city an additional approximately $1.5 million in relocation costs that would otherwise require a new tower facility to be constructed off-site. So I do not represent the golf group, I just represent the HOA. But this is from Mr. Barton, who could not be here, and his attorney is in court. So I'll hand out this email for you, but we certainly wanted you all to be aware of this. So I know you've got interest because of the publicity by others in the Harmon Road property, but your patience and your consideration, not absolute commitment, but consideration of this proposed agreement is very important to the residents of Rock Springs Ridge, the board, and the citizens.
Can I pause you for one second? Because what you just described doesn't necessarily reconcile with what Mr. McSweeney just said. So in your comments that you just said, nowhere in there is Kelly Park Road as part of that conversation. Is that correct?
Oh, no, which conversation?
The scenario that you just laid out, which is conveniently the same that was presented at the amphitheater back on April 27th. So I'm confused here, because again, we keep on. So I'm confused here, because again, we keep on talking about this stuff during public comment, during mayor's reports. There's new deals that are being brought up to the conversation, and it's totally unfair to this council for us to keep on having these things presented in this manner. Almost to the point, let me just read you an email, and this is what it's getting to. These are the types of emails that I'm receiving on this topic. I won't name names, but I'll just read you one paragraph out of an email that I received. "You need to realize that this is only a small but loud group of negative homeowners who are casting doubt and creating conspiracy theories about this deal. There is a very large silent majority who support the acquisition of the golf course, and we do have long memories when it comes to election time. In my house alone, we have X amount of eligible voters in the next election. Remember, decisions and actions that you make do have consequences." I don't know how to interpret that, but it's, to me, it's a threatening tone, and yet I can't rebut back with fact, because I don't have fact. We keep on talking about communications towers, we keep on talking about these tri-party agreements. I saw the Q and A that was sent out to residents within Rock Springs Ridge. There's zero mention of Harmon Road being the lunchpin to this whole deal going down. So I'm just curious how we constantly are getting to this phase, and we have no information on it.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. That's exactly why the president of the HOA asked me to come, to firsthand tell you where we are.
To where?
I'm sorry?
To, come to where?
Come to this commission meeting, so you all will hear it from me as the attorney for the Rock Springs Ridge HOA. The golf group and the HOA are crafting the agreement to present to the commission for your consideration. It does involve Harmon Road, it does involve the 319 acres, and it does, as a contingency, require that the 51-acre parcel that the HOA owns be sold. So, and money, the $2.5 million be paid to the city from that sale.
Okay, so I want to interrupt you, because we've been going round and round with this three-way deal.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, and I, you know, I'm going to defer to the mayor. He has already said that there was, he was not involved in the three-way deal with the HOA. And on April 27th, the only person that actually offered Harmon Road was the mayor, and it has never been brought to us in a discussion, in a workshop. It has constantly come up on the mayor's report, and it has gotten to this point where this email is actually saying, Chad Barton, I am the representative of Rock Springs Ridge Golf Club, which owns approximately, oh, here it is, I'm sorry, I'm going to read the second paragraph. As the new owner of Harmon Road property. That statement alone tells me we haven't done anything up here. He has already made himself owner of Harmon property. So I'm going to now defer to our attorney. I don't want to continue this discussion. It just keeps getting, it just keeps blowing up, and we just totally have, have lost, where are we in this whole thing? The, the vote that was done on Monday, congratulations to the Rock Springs Ridge, that was specifically one business transaction. That was, they all agreed, the 571 homeowners agreed to give the HOA the permission to sell 51 acres. And I know I had spoken to you after that meeting, you kept referring to Harmon Road, and I said, you should not have referred to the Harmon Road. It has not been brought to the council. That has not been brought to us under any, any meeting since April 27th. It has only been brought up to us under the mayor's report. So I'm going to ask our attorney, can he please answer to this, so that we don't keep discussing this? We're going around in circles.
Is the exact question whether there's, there's nothing, there's no official action, there's no agenda item calling for this council to vote upon an acceptance of an offer to purchase the Harmon Road property?
None.
There's no, there's no, no, there's no, there is not, there's nothing on the agenda for today for the acceptance of a offer. This would be, this is the equivalent of somebody selling their property. You put it up for sale, and then someone comes and gives, provides an offer. There is no official offer for the purchase of the Harmon Road property that is being brought before this council for a vote. And I think Mr. Arndman just stated that the city has not been a party to this new agreement that the golf group and the HOA has been drafting. We have not provided any input into this agreement. I have not seen this tri-party, I don't want to sound facetious, but I don't like the sounds of hearing a tri-party agreement, which involves three parties, yet the third party being the city, has not been involved in the drafting, or review, or comments to this agreement. We had, we had discussions, and they were all hypothetical discussions as to what could constitute an agreement. Now, those discussions were not the same, were not substantially the same as to the proposal that Mr. Arndman is bringing forward now, or stating the proposal that Mr. Arndman and the golf group are currently working involving the city's property. So the city has not been involved in these, in this recent drafting of this agreement. So if that agreement is basically an offer to purchase the property, the Harmon Road property, then that is an offer that this council can weigh, can discuss at open meeting, as you have discussed with any other real estate properties that the city has sold recently, such as Sandpiper, such as the airport property. And then it comes to a vote as to whether or not the city wishes to accept or decline the offer from a purchaser, or if there are other offers of other purchasers, then at that point, there's no legal issue for me to counsel this advice. It really falls on this council to make a business decision, just like a homeowner is going to make a business decision as to which is the more palatable offer for the purchase of their property. Then it is a decision for you, this council to undertake if there are multiple offers for city property. As I have stated repeatedly, under Florida statutes, the city can devise its own procedures or mechanism for the sale of its property. Cities are not bound by the same requirements that counties are under Florida statutes. So you can consider the offers however you wish, and you can deny, you can decline offers if you wish. If that is the discretion, that is your discretion, that is your obligation as, as a city council, to either, to either accept or deny an offer that has been placed for the sale of city property. But as of this date, I'm not privy to the details of this purported tri-party agreement for the purchase of the, of the property. And therefore, I mean, I have no, I can provide no counsel, I can provide no advice to the council, because as Mr. Arndman said, the city has not been involved, nor has it been presented to me for review or for commentary to the, to, to you.
Well, the, the HOA and Mr. Kurt Arndman continuously refer to the mayor agreeing to this swap. And the mayor has said, I think at two different council meetings, that he was not involved in the swap. So I, I'm lost in this whole deal.
I thought I've made myself pretty clear along the way, is, no, I didn't come up, think up this three-way, two-way, even two-way swap. I didn't, that was never something I thought of. They brought that to me. Did I, you know, should I take it under advisement? Yes. I mean, as, as with anything, if somebody came in and wanted to build a, you know, a 20-story hotel downtown, you'd at least entertain the offer, and then when they get the details in front of you, they say, okay, that's not a good, that's not a good decision for us.
That's, that's development over swapping. I understand what you're saying, but.
I've never, I've never, ever, it doesn't make sense for us.
But you've left this conversation go for almost April, May, June, July, August, September, October, seven months, they keep referring to this as a land swap. The mayor has offered it, the mayor has actually said yes. And to your point.
Michael, if I said yes.
That the city is not obligated to, the city is not obligated, like the state statute, to put a property up for sale. That's what we have always done in the city of Apopka. When we want to sell a property, a city asset, we have put it out to bid.
Yeah.
And then, once the bids come in, it gets reviewed, and that's when we discuss it here. But that's not happening with the Harmon property.
And I agree, that, and that, as I've stated, I'm not stating that, that following what counties do, or counties are obliged to do, or required to do under statutes, is something the city should not do. The statute, because Florida statutes are fairly open when it comes to cities' authorities to sell property, you can adopt that, you can adopt another, you can do four different versions of how to sell property, and it's not going to be inconsistent with Florida statutes. So I'm not advising that, that what has been done in the past is improper, and we should take another course. That was done, that may continue. Now, for clarification, based on what was presented by Mr. Arndman, the notion of a land swap is actually out, at this point, if I believe Mr. Arndman is correct, the city is no longer swapping properties. This agreement, and what's been circulated, is that the HOA is going to purchase Harmon Road. The HOA will then swap the Harmon Road property with the golf group for the golf course. So where, what's left is that the city is selling the Harmon Road property. This is different than other discussions that were discussed prior when it came to a land swap.
The selling of Harmon property hasn't even been discussed officially here for the council, for the benefit of the council.
Correct. There has been no discussion, or any, there's been no discussion, nothing has been presented for this council to either approve or deny the sale of Harmon Road to the HOA. So there is no official action for this council to take. There can be discussions, and you can opine, because this is what government in the sunshine is, is these are discussions that have to be done in the open. But as for official action, there is no official action to be taken, either, no, there's no official action to be taken at this meeting, and there's nothing been presented for there to be official action to be taken at the next meeting, or at any meeting here forward.
Do you know what this has done to Rock Springs Ridge, Mayor? Do you know what this has done to our community? It has divided us, it has gotten where I get angry emails, and all the commissioners. Do you realize what this has done to us?
So what would you, what would you have done?
Not offered Harmon property.
I didn't offer, I, I don't, I've told you, I can't tell you how many times I've told you, I didn't offer anything.
But good, bad, or indifferent, when 500 people come to an amphitheater, and the mayor of our city presents them with facts around a transaction that involves three different parties, people are going to interpret that as the city is leading an initiative to get that accomplished. And so all of this, all of this speculation that keeps on perpetuating is, I'm getting calls, I'm getting emails around, you gotta give us Harmon, you gotta give us Harmon. Well, I've been pretty transparent about the data that's needed in order for us to have the Harmon conversation. What does the tower look like? What's its useful life? How much is it going to cost to move? We have to do that. Nothing has been presented in an official forum. And yet, you've said on multiple occasions now that you don't support a tri-party agreement or a land swap. So it's misleading to the people that just took that vote, that are expecting this council to do a certain action, and yet, again, I'm not doing it in public comment, I'm not doing it as part of the mayor's report. It's got to be an agenda item, so that, and it's not just Rock Springs Ridge that's impacted by this. It's the other, call it 50,000 residents that live in our city. If there's a tax, if there's a burden of expense to move the communications tower, and we don't offset that expense cleanly, or make some sort of revenue on this land that's very valuable, by the way, we're doing a disservice to the remainder of the taxpayers in our city. I appreciate Rock Springs Ridge and what they're going through, but the green space was all part of the PUD when that was originally created 20 years ago. No one could have anticipated where we sit 21 years later. But that green space, the golf course, it's all part of the PUD. And the PUD, our attorney has cited the 17 number, easy math, the PUD, the current version of that PUD, says there's 1,337 dwelling that's allowed in that particular PUD neighborhood. There's 1,320. Simple math, that's 17 development rights. Someone could hypothesize. That's what, all of this is over. And it's unfair to the, to the residents of Rock Springs Ridge, because there is this wishy-washiness about it.
Mayor, could I?
Sure.
Step in a little bit, thank you all. I understand it's, it's an emotional issue, it's difficult, it sounds like there's been confusion.
It is, because it has divided our community. It's not emotional, it's divided our community.
But that, that's why I was asked to come, so that you will hear from, from the HOA, their direction. So the reason we are here is we've had two principal questions that we've heard from the city. And that is, do the residents support the deal? Well, we have not had a vote, a formal vote, to be able to dispose of the property of 51 acres until Tuesday evening. We've got that vote. Number two, the commission said, well, we haven't been presented with anything. We had, as you all have said, where is the document? Where's the agreement? We now are in a position to be able to submit that to the city for your consideration, and the commissioner suggested it be an agenda item. We have asked, in the past, several times, for a workshop with the commission to discuss this, so that we didn't have to come up with our own proposal and then submit it for formal consideration, but that, that did not happen. So, so just so, the reason we're doing this is to let you know, we've got strong support for making this deal work. If the city does not like the deal, you can say no. But we are working diligently with the owner of that golf course, who, by the way, believes there's far more rights that they will have, even if they have to file a suit, to develop 17, just 17. They think they can develop several hundred units on the golf course property. The residents don't like that, we hope the city doesn't like that, but even if the city were to consider that application and deny it, we've got strong assurance that this owner is not going to take a denial and will pursue litigation for a long time. So we're trying to circumvent that, short-circuit that, protect the city from that litigation and us from being involved in it, solve a problem that exists, understanding the city's need and the public purpose, as your city attorney says, you got it, you have to abide by that. So we understand that. What we're doing is going to give you what we can agree to. And if you like it, or you need to tweak it, we're very much willing to work with you to make that happen. If you don't like it, and you don't want to make that work, we understand that. But we are not going to just sit back and wait until something else happens. We're going to give you everything we think you have asked for, and some of what you have not, so that you can look at it and say, yes, or no, or okay, but you got to do something a little different. So that's why I'm here, is just to let you know, we are diligently working with the golf group, and their lawyers, and their planners, and their engineers, to keep them from proceeding with the development. Because if this deal falls apart, it's likely, we've been assured, that this venture capital fund that owns this property is going to pursue the application, whether they get approved, great, if they, in their mind, if it gets denied, then they're going to file, they claim, they're going to file suit. Well, we don't want that to happen, for anybody. So we're doing what we can to help resolve the overall situation. It's not, we understand there's some negative, there's always going to be negative, but an 82% favorable vote is pretty strong in, in all of the elections I've ever heard about.
So for the, for the record, I want to be on the record, both times I was asked to participate in a workshop, I volunteered, and I was willing and able. And hopefully, and I don't know that this is the case, but hopefully you're positioning that, that kind of interaction model with this council in terms of you all, because again, you just got a yes vote on Monday. And between Monday and today, 48 hours, let's call it, give you the benefit of the doubt, I'm assuming you have positioned it with the Rock Springs Ridge residents to say, you as an HOA board, need to come together and say, we're going to put together a package to bring to you all. And it's very laid out, and data-driven, and you can defend it, it's vetted, but that's certainly not the case here. We're getting an email. And so I, what I don't want to have happen is that people in Rock Springs Ridge have an unrealistic expectation that we should vote a certain way, already in their minds, without us having any sort of data to support before or against argument. So I just think it's lazy and irresponsible for us to sit up here and entice people and, 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 you know, maybe mislead people that might be watching this that live in Rock Springs Ridge before all the facts are on the table.
We'd be happy to have a workshop. We're still willing to have the workshop if the commission would like, or we can present the, we're willing to do whatever the commission needs us to do to help make something like this happen, so the HOA ultimately can acquire the 319-acre now-defunct golf course. So if you all, as a commission, have a different path we should pursue, please let us know. We'll be happy to do what we can to make that work. We're just, we're kind of frustrated like you are, because we've got some negative here, a lot of positive, and it's a difficult process.
But some of the negative dissenting points of view have valid points that are, they're steeped in valid points. steeped in valid points. I mean, not to go down, not to go down the gopher tortoise hole here today, but, pun intended, but there's, there's valid points that people have. We can't just say that dissenting voices are not steeped in fact.
I don't, I don't doubt that, there's almost always arguments and facts on each side. So what we think is, they're far more, far more compelling positions to make a deal like this work. If you don't like this deal, we're happy to consider others, but right now, we've got a very well-funded owner of the defunct golf course that was pursuing full-speed-ahead development of the golf course, which would put the city in a difficult position, because if you say no, they have indicated and said expressly, they will file suit against the city. And, and we don't, we'd rather solve the problem, rather than, by voluntary agreement, rather than litigation. So if there's something we can do that the commission would like us to do, please let us know. Right now, I, unless you tell me otherwise, get the golf group's blessing, the HOA's blessing, send you what we have to your attorney, to you all, let you look at it and throw it in the trash, or say, fix it or don't fix it. But, but we really are asking you to, to understand that we are working as hard as we can to make this deal work, somehow to help the HOA acquire the property. And by the way, for the Winter Garden, Stony Brook West deal, the city of, when they did it, and I'm not going to compare them, but just because it was brought out, Winter Garden did use taxpayer-funded, taxpayer dollars to acquire that property from the bankruptcy trustee. We are closing tomorrow, the documents are signed, where the city of Winter Garden will convey that golf course, which is closed and deteriorating over time, to the HOA. The city also expects to be able to, and assess the residents with a special assessment, not the HOA, but the residents. And those residents are willing to, to actually, we understand, abide by those assessments. So it's different, we've got here an asset, the HOA has an asset that can fund the money to go to the city, so the city gets full compensation for its Harmon Road property. So if you like it, great, if you don't like it, we understand, but we're going to give it the best shot we can.
Okay, so on Monday, the vote was to sell 51 acres.
Correct.
And the price that was being thrown around was 5.5 million. Am I correct in saying that?
There's, there's been talk of that number, there's been talk of all kinds of different numbers.
Okay, so there's, it's not even exact, or it's absolute, there's no contract.
There's no contract in place as of today, correct.
So I remember, very distinctly, because I actually wrote some of that down when you were speaking, there was one resident that said, with 5.5 million dollars, why can't the HOA directly deal with the golf group? You said, it's not what the golf group wants. What they want, and will only accept, is the Harmon property. They want to be able to develop, they want to make their money back from their bad investment in our golf group.
You're right, that's what they told us.
Okay. What I feel, with 5.5 million dollars, they have a good negotiation tool to deal directly with the, with the golf group and leave the city harm, city asset of Harmon property out.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good suggestion. I have not had that discussion with the golf group.
Well, you did, because you said, when they asked you on the public speaking, you responded with, they do not want to deal directly with the HOA, the golf group, and I wrote it down, because the, the statement you said was so strong. It's what the golf group wants, and it is only what they will accept, the Harmon property.
That's what they've told us, that's correct. So, so that's why I'm here, to make sure you all understand what the golf group has told us, in, in the email from, from Mr. Chad Barton, the representative of the owner, so.
He's, yeah, he's already made himself the owner of Harmon property. That hasn't even come up.
He knows he does not own it, and if it doesn't happen, then he will never be able to own it. What he's saying in the email is, if this deal works, then he's willing to accommodate the communications tower on the Harmon Road property for, as the city now has it, in a mon, allow the monopole to happen. But, if the, if the sale of the, of the 51 acres does not bring that kind of money, if it does not happen, then, and the golf, the golf group is saying, they've got, they asked for 8 million dollars publicly. They think they need 8 million dollars for us as an HOA to buy it. We cannot afford that. So, we've, we have worked diligently to find another way to make this happen. We think we can, but we cannot do that without the city's help. And, and, so, we're at, at your mercy, if, and, and, so if it works, great, if it doesn't, we will have given it the best try we can.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Mayor, this is a mess, and I will tell you that it has sadly divided our community. 17 years living in Rock Springs Ridge, I have not seen the contention, the angry, the anger, the insults, it, it has been very disturbing to me as a resident, it has been very disturbing to me as an elected official. I represent the city of Apopka, I am a resident of Rock Springs Ridge, I have a home on the golf club, the golf course, and this has been something that has actually been eating at me, because the Harmon property has been the biggest misrepresentation in this entire deal.
And we got a couple things we can do, we can, just thinking through this, we could do a workshop if you think that's going to solve it. We could bring up a motion at the next council meeting that we, that we're not going to sell the Harmon Road property to, to the golf group or to the HOA. Whatever you'd like to do, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. We'll bring it up, we'll have a vote on, if that's a, that's a.
We hadn't noticed, we put something in the paper talking about a communications tower presentation. We still haven't gotten that. I mean, again, I don't think we can make a yes or no decision on the piece of property until we understand all of the data around the comms tower.
Okay.
I mean, again, not spoken, but backed by fact, a report, something that gives us useful life, how much it costs to maintain it on an annual basis to kind of fix it, or if we do a total move of that somewhere else, what does that look like? Or, if there's developers or people that want to purchase that property, if that's another decision point, to say, hey, the communications tower can stay there, and there's actually ways that you can develop around it. Again, all of these things, it's just hearsay and, and speculation at this point. I want to see something formal that we can all react to, and it gives, again, it gives a chance for Rock Springs Ridge residents, it gives a chance for people that are not Rock Springs Ridge residents to come and weigh their opinions on this matter as well.
Okay, Mayor Robert Hippler, information technology director. Some of the information you're looking for, Commissioner Becker, I can give you now. Now, clearly looking for a, a full report as you're asking, I don't have a hard set schedule that shows when a tower actually is end of life, like you got to shut it down now. So, I'm going to give you, I'm going to try to keep it condensed, I know you have a long meeting here.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want to make a decision right now, to be honest with you, I would rather have, I want to be able to review the data and study it.
Okay.
To make a decision just based off what you might be presenting right here.
Yeah, okay, I can give you a brief, and again, I have the, the engineering study, the last engineering study, that AT&amp;T, when they were coming up to look at getting their tower onto it, which I can certainly share.
Is that in our iPads, our work iPad?
That is not, because I wasn't sure if that was going to be involved in this actual discussion, so.
So can we put this off? Because I mean, we've, we've taken enough time right now of our, our business actions, and we have people here for other items, and since we're not making a decision about this, Robert, I, I appreciate all the work that you've done, this is something that we can hold off, and probably, if we decide a workshop, to bring that forward. But right now, I, I don't think it will serve a purpose, because we're not voting on it right now, and, I, I don't know, I, I just don't want to take up any more time with this. I think we've, we've, we've taken this matter to where it should just kind of lie until we can get to the next process of this.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Rob.
And I thank you so much, and at the earliest opportunity, if you can send it to each of the commissioners, so that we can kind of review it, so I appreciate it, Robert.
No worries, I can take care of that.
So what's the will of the council? Do you want to do a workshop, you want to bring it at, I don't know if we can get it done by next week, I think, if we wanted to bring it to a council for a vote, we could, I would say the first week of November would be as early as we can, we could get everything put together. Or, and, and Rob, would you have some pretty firm numbers if we had them by, for the first week of November, the third? Yeah. Yeah, any, any other, I know you've been, you've reached out to AT&amp;T and.
Yeah, well, we kind of have a moving target at this point, so if it stayed where it was going to be located, I was going to try to do a public partnership with AT&amp;T, and they were on board with actually, maybe even project managing the tower. Through Motorola, we are going to pay, I don't want to say top dollar, but you're going to pay more than probably I could get it done with somebody else, but getting a actual quote for you of something real, that if I said Motorola, go ahead, here's a check, it's 2.7 to physically move everything over to Harmon. And moving means, new building, generator and tower itself. We use existing ready equipment from Harmon. So, that's, that's where that price comes from, like private contractor, or somebody else getting it, could we bid it out, engineer, how, you know, what do we want the tower to do? And then bid it out and actually follow the, you know, use our procurement, and you'll see who comes back in the cheapest on it, or, you know, with the best proposal for us. So that's what the move is, you know, leaving where you are now, it costs nothing.
But could we get any, any other bids, just so we've got a, kind of a?
I don't know if that goes outside, and does that start messing with our, you know, cone of silence, if I start seeking bids from somebody, does that give them an unfair advantage, is my only concern.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right.
Well, if you could just send us the, what you do have, so that we can review it, and then, that's something that will, when we come to either the next pub, council meeting, or we decide we're going to have a workshop, we can talk about it.
Is that what you want? Do you want a workshop?
Well, that was a suggestion that was made, and at this point, I don't know if, how we can undo this debalical, but if that's going to help us to kind of get back online and, and.
I mean, I don't know what else there is, I mean, we kind of know what, what the options are.
Well, it's gone this far.
I mean, I don't mind, whatever you'd like to do, whatever the.
Well, that was something that should have been done from the very beginning, I feel.
But, but even since the beginning, it's changed, the 51 acres, at the beginning of the, of the swap was never intentioned, so that's, that's even changed since we, but, but.
If, if a workshop is required for the staff to recommend to this council a course of action as it relates to Harmon Road, then I'm all for a workshop. If it's not required, if we can do all the data that supports any recommended action that staff has of this council as, as the disposition of Harmon Road, whether that is a disposition where the staff feels that that should be earmarked and allocated for Rock Springs Ridge, or if we say, hey, based off of the numbers that we have on the comms tower, and the ability to move it or keep it, and what the market bears for this piece of property, I think all that data should be presented to this council for us to make the most informed decision possible. Whether that takes a workshop or not, I don't care, I'm willing and able to participate in both ways.
I think legally, if you wish to have a workshop, workshop would, would enable you to discuss all of the issues in the open, without actually rendering it to an official vote. So I don't want to use the word whatever's required, because it's not necessarily a requirement. If you believe that the best method is for it all to be discussed in the open in a workshop, take gathering, basically using a workshop as a fact-finding mission on your part in order to educate you with all of the issues, and then, whatever's going to be presented. Or you can direct staff, make a motion and direct staff to basically bring, present forward the items, however you want to couch the terms and what it is that you're looking to ultimately seek, is it, make a presentation with all the facts as to, for this board to render a decision as to whether or not to put the Harmon Road property on the market, yes or no? And then it could be, we, staff can present to you all of the information required, and that which you ask for there then to be taken as an, we can properly notice it on the, on the agenda, and then you can take official action at that point, which would be limited to your vote, would be limited to know what the official action, be it either, we're not going to sell the Harmon Road property, period, we are not going to, we're not going to entertain any offers as to this property, we're going to put the property for sale, that, these are, those actions that you can then take an official vote on. The workshop will just enable you to bring all the facts, discuss them in the open, and then determine whether or not then direct, directing staff whether or not to actually present an official matter for official action to be taken on the part of the city.
Yeah, so I mean, decision tree, because there's certain things that involve Rock Springs Ridge, and there's certain things that don't. Like if you, if you take this from the very top, okay, throw away anything related to Rock Springs Ridge at this moment, we had a piece of land called Harmon Property, or Harmon Road Property, of the city of Apopka, and I think the mayor said at a meeting, last meeting or the meeting a time ago, that that was maybe going to be used for recreational purposes to kind of, as a parks and recs type of space. Does the staff feel, does, you know, Mr. Foreman feel that he still needs that land for parks and recs purposes? If the answer is yes, we don't get too far down that decision tree. If the answer is no, we, you know, we use Camp Weewall to kind of offset some of that need, and we feel comfortable Camp Weewall will satisfy some of the parks and recs space, we feel comfortable that we don't want to use it for any city purpose, and, yeah, we want to put it out on the open market. Then, next question would be, the communications tower, is it cost prohibitive, prohibitive for us to sell it at this point in time? Meaning we have to move it and trigger 2.7 million dollars of spend, and go through that, that kind of decision process? And then lastly, okay, if we decide to sell it, what are we trying to do? What are we trying to accomplish? Are we trying to sell it for the best price possible to the benefit of all taxpayers within the city of Apopka? Or, is there a compelling enough case for us to earmark it solely for the purposes of Rock Springs Ridge initiative? So kind of walking through all those, those decision tree path, or steps, I think is what would be valid. If we can do that in a workshop, great.
Okay, if that's the direction, if, I mean, let this council provide the direction to staff as to what the subject matter of the workshop is, if it's basically a workshop regarding the disposition of the Harmon Road property, with the subjects including what you have stated, is it recreational needs, the tower relocation, or tower remaining on the site, or then other financial matters, then we can stack and then move forward and present such a, an agenda for such a workshop. And the workshop is basically presenting all the information, there is no vote, and there's no official action taken at a workshop. It is all, it is just the presentation, the public will be able to provide any input at such, at such a workshop, if so inclined. I need, we'll need to double-check whether it's not, it's a workshop, it's not necessarily a public hearing. It's a public meeting, but it's not necessarily a public hearing. So it's an informational gathering tool for this council to educate themselves and to prepare a background for any official action in the future. If that is the whim of this council, then, I mean, I would suggest that a vote be taken to direct staff to be, to, to schedule and prepare a workshop on this subject matter, and staff will then present an agenda, and prepare an agenda for that, that workshop, and if you might even decide when to, to schedule that, such a workshop, if you want to schedule it on a date, at this present time, and the next, our next night meeting is until the second meeting in November, to, in order for, for economy, for you folks to not have to come twice to City Hall, you could, we could have the workshop during the day of the, an evening meeting, but that's up to the, the council to decide.
I think our only stumbling block might be whether Rob could get us some, some hard data on the cost to move versus to stay, and so that, that's only I see, that, you know, I think Brian could, you know, figure out as far as recs space, I think.
Or time-wise, the reverse could be, you could have, you could actually hold the workshop in the evening after the first city council meeting in November, since we have a 1:30.
The question is, is will Rob have legitimate numbers that, you know, if that's part of the discussion, is how much we, you know, it would cost to put the tower there? I mean, because even by putting the tower, keeping it on-site where it's collapsible, collapsible there, the property would be usable, except 20, it'd be 20, what, 21 acres versus 23, or something like that. I don't know, what, what's the cone for the monopoles?
Well, it's going to be a lot smaller. If we had, if we were putting in the tower, it's ideally 100 by 100, because there's going to be potentially three carriers, so 100-foot square.
Okay.
So, you know, existing with the guide tower, you have roughly an 80, or I'm sorry, eighth of a mile diameter across from it, so radius out from the center of the tower, you're 16th of a mile out, so it's roughly 660 feet, which is what we're taking up right now in a circle.
It would still be that for the monopole?
Well, self-support, it's a different monopole, you know, self-support is going to take a smaller area, of course, smaller footprint for it. But, you know, the number, that 2.7 is an actual real number, that's not a.
Right, no, no, I agree, but.
I can certainly get that, I can, you know, have that on paper for you from Motorola, I was hoping to have it now, but unfortunately I don't have it in my hand, but that is a number from our actual.
Right. Well, here's what I suggest, why don't we, as soon as Rob gets us a number from at least one more carrier, or one more tower builder, as soon as we get. uh, as soon as we get something there that, that, you know, because that, if the number changes wildly, we, we'd want to have pretty accurate numbers. As soon as we get his go ahead, and I say, we'll, we'll have a, go ahead and have a workshop, go through the numbers, go through the, the, uh, the use of the land and, and then do a workshop and then hopefully soon thereafter, you know, have a council, council vote. Does that, does that work for you, Commissioner Velazquez?
Um, at this, at this stage, I would love to just have something to bring a resolution to all of this, yes. I just think it's fair to the council members, it's fair to the Rock Springs Ridge community, it's fair to the attorneys. Because right now, um, what's been left out of this major component has been a, a vote from the commission.
And so, what, so how does that?
Well, if, if, if a workshop or if we need to wait for him to get the hard numbers, then that's what we have to wait.
Okay, Rob, you got your marching orders, I mean, just what the best you can do. And I don't know if there's anybody out there that maybe we can reach out to some other municipality, I was talking to your guys from, from Orange County last night and, uh, I guess they're putting an RFP out here real soon for a tower, but maybe there's, we can go out and see if somebody's built a new tower around that gives us maybe a, as far as a new, a new tower at the, you know, at the, at the fire station site.
Last hour cost from them putting it out there, but again, you know, with prices, everything increasing with COVID, so that may not be inaccurate, but.
Right, more accurate than what we've got, yeah.
I'll get you the information.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Rob, okay.
And Mayor, also in all fairness to Rock Springs Ridge, if we're going to put Harmon Road up for sale and should we get an offer more than what Rock Springs Ridge is willing to pay?
Should we take it?
Right, should we take it? I mean, so they need to also understand that as well.
Yeah, I think we got one of, excuse me, have some other?
Sue Moyer.
Hi, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Get a stick, right, close to it.
Hi, good afternoon, um, I wasn't planning. Closer, closer, oh, wow. Usually I'm loud anyways. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but after what I've already heard, I needed to make sure that you could all hear somebody's opinion and voice from one of the 12 Sand Wedge Loop homeowners. I need you to know that none of us have actually been approached and asked what we thought of this deal. And the information that is going out from our HOA board, I believe in one of their communications said that all of the Sand Wedge Loop residents had been asked and consulted and we were not aware of any of this. And then they are passing out information saying, well, we're getting 200 feet back in our yard, we're getting a masonry wall, we're getting $2,500 in landscape and of course to divide the community against us. We have never, as you know, with what you're discussing right now, if it isn't in writing, it doesn't mean squat. And we have never seen a contract, we have asked for details, we have asked for financials. And all that we get, are met with by our board and their supporters are demeaning, belittling, evasive answers. But we've get no answers and you can go look on the social media pages or the Nextdoor Neighbor page and you will find out that that is absolutely true. We have never received financial information, the contracts, um, the last information we were given, the contract with, and they're not talking about the name of who the buyer is anymore, they just call him the buyer. But the buyer was supposed to be Dr. Wade Foster with Eloise Holdings and that information, the contract was supposed, offer was supposed to expire September 17th. Well, it's what, October 6th? And so now at the meeting on Monday, they just continued to talk about the buyer without any information. And we have no idea, as they said, what's the contract, right? I also want to bring up a point that, um, I believe it was at the April 27th meeting where Commissioner Becker got up and he said that we would have to have a two thirds vote of the community to go through with this. And I want you all to realize that the vote that was held on Monday, I believe was 55% of the community voted. So we did not meet that two thirds vote, but they're using that instead as a quorum, so I just wanted to let you know.
Can I pause the time there real quick? And I want to clarify, because I, during that meeting, I was thinking a vote for like a recreational district, not necessarily what your bylaws allow for in a, in a community vote, so I just want to clarify that and that was my mistake.
Right, and, and most people were thinking, most residents were thinking, yes, it would either have to be a two thirds vote or a majority plus one. And it, I mean, only around 55% voted, so, um, it obviously wasn't a clear majority. I also wanted to bring up that, um, what Commissioner Becker just said about the green space, that the green space has been the green space for 21 years, 22 years, whatever it's been. The, and the gopher tortoise area is behind my yard. It is not an out parcel, as our board continues to try to call it an out parcel to make it sound like it's not connected to our community. It is connected to our community and it is used in the calculation of our homes per acre. So I wanted to make sure that people realize that part of the space is in our community and it is part of our PUD and opening the PUD would put us vulnerable to the Gulf group coming in and requesting that the homes per acre be adjusted for their benefit so they don't have to sell anything and can develop on the land. I also wanted to reiterate.
You need to wrap it up, please, ma'am.
Yep. That we have asked, we do not see the contract, we have no idea, the contract apparently has been an original contract and then a counteroffer contract, but we have not seen the contract. And yes, this has been very divisive in our community and I want people to recognize that this is not an overwhelming majority and a lot of people are not willing to speak out because they do not want to be bullied or receive threatening texts or have other people in the community jump on them for sharing their opinion.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
And Nick Nesta.
Counsel, good afternoon, Mayor, thank you, um, just wanted to stand up and.
Nick, you need name and address for the.
Sorry, Nick Nesta, 533 Mount Argyle Court in Apopka. A lot of talk has been going on, obviously, on the Rock Springs Ridge, the deal that's going on, the land swap, what have you. Commissioner Velazquez, you, you most recently said that you want a resolution to this, um, that it's a lot of talk and, and that's something that I was able to present to, um, City Administrator Edward Bass yesterday is a offer, uh, from a development group for the Harmon Road property. It's all cash, they're ready to close and, uh, it's substantially higher than what the HOA is willing to pay. Furthermore, they're also willing to keep what, uh, the cell phone tower there as needed, carve out as much acreage as we need to, to make it work. I'm fairly certain there was, and I haven't gotten this confirmed yet, but there's a, I think this is one of the largest towers in the area and I think it's grandfathered in, so if we remove it or change it, we don't get that height anymore, so we, and I could be wrong there, but I'm fairly certain there's a, there's a huge advantage to keeping it where it is. Furthermore, we've had a lot of verbal things said, I presented this in black and white. It's here, it's there, it's, the number's there, so, um, I am requesting some type of official counter. Now, keep in mind too, the offer that was presented was, uh, with the thought in mind that we were going to remove the tower, but if you can get me a counter that has the tower staying there, back out the acreage and go from there. One final piece is that the, uh, one comment, since it's a public comment, um, the Gulf group is, is holding us hostage and in turn holding you, the council hostage and, uh, the HOA board is negotiating happily with our cap doors, so, um, let's stop that right where we're at. I've brought you an incredible solution that maximizes our profits on this land while still minimizing how much cash we're going to be spending out of pocket. Any questions, feel free to reach out, I also have copies of it if you guys would like.
Well, Nick, be sure to send these to all the other commissioners.
I got hard copies right here.
Oh, perfect, awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Susan, we got anybody else? Is that it? Okay. Rod Olson, come on down.
Mayor Commissioners, Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. I will be brief and hopefully painless. First of all, before this commission, Mr. McSweeney said that there would be information, facts presented to homeowners before a vote would take place. Instead, the majority of the board hired a PR firm that played on the frustrations, that paid upon the desires and played upon the fears of homeowners. No facts, no appraisals, no environmental studies, no competitive bids for what had to be done as far as the repairs or ongoing repairs, all fluff. And yet, at this point, with a vote coming the way it is, I hope and pray that we'll have a favorable outcome. Because right now, the homeowners have paid $275,000 in attorney fees and a PR firm for nothing. No viable evidence, nothing that we can put a hanger hat on other than, oh, we've got this offer floating out here somewhere. The only reason the homeowners have not bolted at this point, in my opinion, is because there was a $550,000 pocketed money by prior boards to hold money for possible litigation for the golf course. If our homeowners got a $50, $100, $200 assessment tomorrow, you would have this room filled, blowing this place up. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Okay. All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good, good afternoon, how everybody's doing? My name is Sylvester Hall, I live at 391 Rolling Hills Lane, Rock Springs Ridge. I'm going to make this short. I'm for the sale of the property, 100%, but the process, the process has been very disappointing. And I'm not going to repeat what has already been said. I witnessed Monday, a community come together and actually give away their right to oversee a sale. Was the most disheartening thing I have ever witnessed. When we talk about misinformation, again, I'm 100% for the sale. When the mayor came out before, I said it sounded like a great idea. Put everything together and bring it to the people. It seems to me a great effort has been made. If you see, it seemed like it'd been actually hustled. That's the way I felt when I left there Monday. I say the community's actually been hustled and I got up and I raised my, I raised my voice and stated that. How can you give away your right to oversee and nobody has given you anything in a contract or anything? And you say, hey, look, I want you to act on my behalf, so I signed away my vote to let you do that. Without any guarantee, any promise or anything, that's misleading our people. And that has great consequences because everything started at a local level and it kept going. And if you look at what's happening nationally, people are dying from misinformation. So I come to each and every one of you, it's time to say accountability. Let's be fair, Mayor, I didn't see you Monday, I don't know if you had other obligations, but you was out there before with the bandwagon waving and say, hey, this is a great idea. I didn't see you Monday. Commissioner Smith, I didn't see you Monday, I didn't know if you had other ideas, I missed other things and blah, 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 but this wasn't something that was just thrown at everybody, it had been scheduled. And so you live in Rock Springs Ridge, so, you know, I expected to, you know, at a, at a minimum to see you there. But I want to say to everybody in this room, it's time out for misinformation, let's be fair, we can all have different opinion, but we all need to respect and make sure we bring the facts, because that's the only way people can make an educated decision and make the best decision moving forward. Once we do that, once we fail to do that, we're misleading the people, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, I think we've talked to that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody needs to pull? If not, look for a motion to approve the three items on consent. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Community Emergency Response Team Grant Acceptance and Agreement, Chief Willems.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Today I'm going to present to you a grant opportunity that we were awarded, uh, just the other day, uh, from Volunteer Florida. It was a $5,000 grant. But basically I'm going to give you some of the, the background of what CERT is. It's a Community Emergency Response Team. Again, the concept was implemented by Los Angeles Fire Department back in 1985. As you know, out west, they have a lot of, uh, different major disasters involving earthquakes and, um, natural disasters like that and that's where kind of the CERT idea came from. And again, it kind of, uh, those earthquakes further confirmed the need for training civilians to kind of assist in, um, response to nat- natural manmade disasters. As we know, in the state of Florida, we were faced, uh, every year with our hurricane season. Last week, we had Sam go by us, the biggest storm on the planet, you know, it was going right by our, our state, so it's something we need to be prepared for. Um, CERT became a national program in 1993 and there's now over, uh, CERT programs in all 50 states. Each unique to their community and it's, uh, essential to building the culture of preparedness, uh, throughout the United States, so. What the program does is we're going to educate, uh, our citizens about disaster preparedness for hazards, how they may impact our areas and actually trains them, uh, to assist, uh, first responders in, in those events. Um, the, the CERT program encompasses nine different units, emergency preparedness, fire safety, some basic emergency medical operations, even some light search and rescue, uh, operations. The organization itself, disaster psychology, uh, terrorism and disaster simulations. And you can see some of the pictures there, there is a training that goes, uh, through this, through, to this group as well. Um, again, once we, uh, train these, uh, citizens, um, we're going to use those, uh, during exercises and things like that, but we're gonna, they're going to be able to assist us in the future with, uh, any of our disasters that happen. Some examples, they can work at points of distribution or pods, um, help out with initial damage assessments post storms, uh, sandbag distribution, uh, non-emergency calls during events and even public education, so definitely a win-win for us. They're also encouraged to support emergency response agencies by taking more of an active role. Something I'd like to do with this group is establish an assistance advisory committee for the fire department. Something we can kind of communicate with them on a regular basis to see, um, what they feel, how they feel about things. Because of this grant and, uh, the hard work, I want to give thanks to, uh, Dr. Jackson, Lieutenant Manor, who is unable to be here today. We were able to acquire this grant, but we're going to be able to, uh, train and equip 90, I'm sorry, 29 members, uh, to serve our community. That's something we're pretty excited about. So kind of summarize grants, $5,000 awarded through Volunteer Florida. We're going to purchase the 29 ProCERT kits, with the kits you see right there, the backpacks, including flashlights, things like that for these, uh, responders. Um, the training itself with skill seats and checkoffs and CPR and, uh, it is a one-to-one match. In other words, we have to put in $5,000 ourselves, but the nice thing is we can actually utilize those volunteer hours and some of our staff hours, um, to pay back that, that cost share, so it's a win-win, uh, for us. So at, uh, this point, if I have any questions, if you have to answer them.
Any questions for Chief?
I do, how, how will we, um, select our volunteers? What's going to be the process?
Yeah, that's a very good question, something, um, once you guys approve it today, we're going to start working, actually probably with, uh, Joe, um, with HR to make sure the application process is going through, make sure we, it is a FEMA sponsored, uh, program as well, you know, so some of the money comes through. So, um, we will be, uh, beginning that application process and, and vetting our people as soon as, as soon as we're approved. There'll be more to come on it.
How soon will that start?
Hopefully next week.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions for Chief? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to accept the Volunteer Florida Community Emergency Response Team CERT grant. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next up, Dr. Jackson to present the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Acceptance and Agreement. Oh, maybe not.
Good evening. Dr. Jackson had to step out to meet with the youth council video this afternoon. My name is Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director for the City of Apopka. The City of Apopka has been awarded a $750,000 CDBG housing assistance with a $50,000 city match for the Community Development Block Grant that will allow for us to assist homeowners to rehab or bring their homes up to the code. The grant hoped to rehab between 10 to 13 homes, and the agreement is good from August 1st to January 31st, 2024. The Citizen Advisory Task Force will review the applications and will present their recommendations to the council. The recommendation for today is to authorize the major and the commissioners to execute all documents required in connection with the execution of the agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Gladimir on the grant?
Is that citywide or is it the CD? What is that, the CR?
It's a CDBG housing agreement. From the state of Florida. It's a state grant.
It's a state grant, but is it in any particular area? Like, we're not, it's anywhere in the city, anybody in the city?
It's got the household incomes. I think it's in, I thought it was in the CRA as well, wasn't it?
I think it's just in the CRA, Commissioner Velazquez. I can get that information for you, but I will tell you, they do, they do have to follow the criteria that you see in your report. They have to meet these specific criteria, income criteria, to even qualify. But I will make sure, we'll get the boundaries for you.
So it's only in the city? That's what I was, I was asking. The CRA, how many homes do we have? How many homes do we have in the CRA district?
I do not know that offhand, but I can get you that as well. So I'll get you the number of homes in the CRA.
Because then this will be divided among all those homes to have an opportunity for that, all those homes to have an opportunity to use, utilize this grant.
Correct. Only if they meet this criteria. Now, keep in mind, they could be in the CRA, but they don't meet these income criteria. But yes, I will get you those counts. We'll get the counts, we'll give the council those, the number of homes in the CRA. And then if it's strictly just to the CRA area.
Okay.
And how will this be publicized so that individuals know this, that whether or not they, they know what you're doing?
Commissioner, I think there are requirements. There's, there are requirements that come down with the grant. We will be following those advertising requirements that come down through the, through the grant process, so.
That's something that the, Commissioner Smith, that's something that the local churches on the south side of Apopka can also participate, the pastors and that, to really present to their congregation. That would be another way.
All right.
Okay, any other questions for Gladimir? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to accept the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and the agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Allison, EPG 700 Hermitsmith Road Project.
Good afternoon. Allison Williams, Planner 1 with the City's Planning Division. The subject property is located at 700 Hermitsmith Road. The major development plan details the development of infrastructure servicing, a proposed industrial warehouse and office-based development totaling up to 42,111 square feet on 7.37 acres. A five-foot sidewalk will be constructed along Hermitsmith Road. The development will have two full access connections on Hermitsmith Road, and a right turn lane will be installed at both access points. The applicant proposes red maples, live oaks, crape myrtles, and southern magnolias within the development. DRC recommends approval, staff recommends approval, Planning Commission recommends approval, and staff and applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for Allison? All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public, public hearing, look for a motion to approve the major development plan for EPG 700 Hermitsmith Road.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Oh, aye. Sorry.
Okay, next up, Major Development Plan Apex Apopka. Phil?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for a multifamily complex comprising of 284 dwelling units. The subject properties consisting of approximately 18.98 acres are highlighted in yellow and located north of Harmon Road and east of Binion Road. Surrounding uses include the State Route 429, Vista's at Waters Edge subdivision, the Alta East Shore apartment site, and the Advent Health Hospital. The site is proposed to be accessed via South Binion Road, and there is an emergency access point also off of South Binion Road. Right and left turn lanes are proposed at the access point. And in addition, the applicant has provided sidewalks along South Binion Road and within the multifamily complex. The applicant has provided 10.7 acres of open space, which includes a pool, plaza, and perimeter landscaping. The applicant has provided perimeter and foundation landscaping, and the landscaping throughout the development includes southern magnolias, live oaks, and viburnums. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed major development plan. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to approve the Apex Apopka Major Development Plan. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions for Phil?
You stated that there were right and left turn lanes proposed?
Yes, sir. The main entrance is located at this northwestern area of the development, and there are right and left turn lanes on Binion Road that are proposed for that access point.
So were those be done at the time of the development? Yes.
Yes, sir. Those would be required.
Then my next question is, with all the developments taking place on Binion Road, would there be right-of-way? Should we, at some point, get ready to four-lane Binion Road? Would there be right-of-way available?
If I may defer that to the Transportation Planner.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Binion Road is a county road. It is not planned or programmed for improvement. And as you know, we're taking all of our $20 to $30 million worth of resources and putting them into Okoye-Popka Road. So what we're doing as we go along is making sure that we have good access and access management, and that will come in, in turn lanes. I can't really ask for right-of-way when there's nothing planned or programmed in the future for road widening. I'm optimistic that what we do to Okoye-Popka Road is going to help with any issues that might come up on Binion.
One last I was looking for, but okay. I, I think we're gonna get to that point. Binion Road is developing, and it's already a dangerous road for travel and...
We have, we've done a study. We had one of our developers, it has to do with the St. John's River Water Management District. And we've been negotiating with Orange County to get the speed limit reduced. So the, as these developments come in, people are already used to driving slower. It's, it's way too fast out there with the, the speed limit's too high with all the curves and the, the development that keeps coming. And then as long as we have turn lanes, I'm not saying that in the future there won't be places where we have to do access management, maybe widen in certain places by way of putting a median in the road to stop too many full-access cuts on the road. I, it's a county road, and I'm working with the county as best I can. But they have made no indication they wanna fix it.
All right. I mean, would you, would you put more emphasis on north of the 429 overpass for Binion anyhow? Because it seems, seems to me we're gonna be limited the amount of development that goes south of that area where Harmon's at right now with Waters Edge and Alta East and those areas. So I think if you're putting more emphasis, almost even beyond Boy Scout to the north is where you really need to focus in on doing some of that four-laning and smoothing out some of those kind of dangerous curves. Is that where your head is at? Or do you think that that area is gonna need four lanes?
Well, right now, it's, it's to put a couple signals in, probably one at Boy Scout and Binion, and one at Harmon and Binion in the future, which are actually south of where you're talking about. I...
We're also working with CFX to give you some more.
Oh, that's right.
Take some pressure off. Let's, let's, let's...
We're, CFX gave us some good news last week.
Yeah.
We asked them to look at putting ramps to and from the north on 429 to make a connection to Binion Road. It'll be at Boy Scout. And they told us that it is a bondable project. It's cost feasible, and they're gonna put it in their plan next year. Of course, it's subject to their board approval. It's a $20 to $25 million project. And the, the reason that we are optimistic it'll take pressure off of Binion, especially where you're talking about, Commissioner, is because if it's bondable, meaning they'll start paying off the principal and not the loan by the 22nd year, that means it's gonna see a lot of traffic. It's gonna relieve a lot of traffic off of Binion. Generally, when you put interchanges in, they don't make money. They're just a, you know, a convenience for drivers. But this one actually is gonna make money and pay for itself, so.
And all they're really asking from us is just the right-of-way to get, get onto the on-ramp.
On the east side of Binion to kind of realign Boy Scout Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, so to expand on my point, like, all that development. So we own a big section of property in our, south of Waters Edge. The state of Florida is the largest property owner to the east and south of there. And then you get all the way down to Orange County Magnolia Park area. So it's not like you're gonna have a whole bunch of development that happens on that south side.
Yes, sir.
So I put more emphasis north of there, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, does anybody need, wanna hear from the developer? Okay, if not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve, what is this, the Major Development Plan for Apex Apopka.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Major Development Plan Florida Town Center Phase 1. Phil?
Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for a multifamily complex comprising of 300 dwelling units. The subject area is highlighted in yellow and located north of the State Route 429 Connector Road and west of the State Route 429. To the north are the Stanton Ridge, Veilview, and Plymouth Hills subdivisions. And to the west is the Shallow Missionary Baptist Church and single-family homes. The major development plan details a multifamily complex comprising of 300 dwelling units and infrastructure servicing a mixed-use development. The development is proposed to be accessed from State Route 429 Connector Road, South Fork Road, Kiawa Avenue, with a planned future connection at the western end of the development. Right and left turn lanes are proposed at the access point along the State Route 429 Connector Road. In addition, the applicant has provided sidewalks along Floridian Town Center Boulevard, South Fork Road, Kiawa Avenue, and within the proposed multifamily complex. The applicant has provided landscaping that includes live oaks, southern magnolias, and viburnums. The applicant has provided a pool, clubhouse, and landscape buffers within the proposed multifamily complex. This major development plan is consistent with the ordinance number 2840, the Plan Development Master Plan, Master Development Agreement, Transportation Impact Fee Credit Agreement, and Utility Impact Fee Credit Agreement that were approved by the City Council on August 18th, 2021. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to approve the Floridian Town Center Phase 1 Major Development Plan. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for Phil? All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the Major Development Plan for the Floridian Town Center Phase 1.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker? I mean, Bankson, sorry. Mr. Bankson?
I'm shorter.
Second. Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
You've got much better hair than I do.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, we've got, the next one is a Major Development Plan North Star Logistics Center. I know it's kind of a tag team between Phil and Pam. Pam, you're coming up first. She's seven on the agenda instead of six, but...
I think what we'd like to do, because these go together. Phil's gonna go first. And before he asks you to make a motion and approve, I would like to talk about the Transportation Impact Fee Credit Agreement, and then come back and approve his or not, and then the Transportation Impact Fee.
Sound like playing.
Which one is that, Major North Star?
The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for an industrial warehousing complex comprising of 761,240 square feet. The subject properties consisting of approximately 55.19 acres are highlighted in yellow and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. Industrial areas are located to the east and north.
There it is, I got it.
The development proposes two phases, with Phase 1 comprising of the two northernmost buildings. The site is proposed to be accessed at two access points off of Okoye-Popka Road, with right and left turn lanes being provided at both access points. And the access points are located here at the southwestern area of the development and here at the south-central area of the development. In addition, the applicant has provided sidewalks along Okoye-Popka Road and within the development. The open space requirement for the site is 5%, and the applicant has provided 6.2% with perimeter landscaping. In addition, the applicant has provided foundation landscaping and parking area landscaping. The applicant has provided fencing around the proposed stormwater ponds, and the applicant is requesting the use of vinyl-coated chain link fencing in areas that are not facing Okoye-Popka Road, while the fencing that faces Okoye-Popka Road is aluminum.
So what you have in your packet today is the first of several transportation impact fee credit agreements that will come before you to widen and make other improvements to Okoye-Popka Road. This first one will be with the North Star developers, what they've agreed to do for impact fee credits. And their impact fees are like $1.4 million. They are going to design and install a signal at the intersection of Keene Road and Okoye-Popka Road. They're gonna design it for when the four-laning goes in. They're also going to design the four-laning of Okoye-Popka Road from the ramp south of their entrance to north of their entrance. We're not quite ready to widen it, but we'll have the design plans set to go. Orange County is taking care of the piece to the north from about where their design's gonna stop up to Bradshaw, because as y'all know, that's where the major stormwater issues are. They're gonna have to buy about eight houses. I think they've already got a lot of things in the works about what's going on. So it's, it's beneficial to allow them to get that ready while we do some other things. And we'll, we'll do the widening later with other impact fee funds that we're collecting from the 20 to 25 developments that are in the queue right now. So this agreement essentially, I think there's a graphic in your packet at the end of the agreement that shows exactly what the improvements are gonna be. There're gonna be turn lanes. They're just not gonna do the widening right now, just the design.
Any questions for Pam or Phil? Yeah, just, I can tell you, Okoye-Popka, I was out. Matter of fact, I was going to Kent Weewaw one day last week, and there was a semi that was coming off Boy Scout Weewaw one day last week, and there was a semi that was coming off Boy Scout onto Apopka-Coe and got buried onto the pavement. So, yeah, those improvements at Apopka-Coe...
That fix is coming with the third agreement.
Correct. Yes, yeah, I know, I just, but that, so to get some of these improvements on Apopka-Coe are critically important for that area, so... Okay, well, any questions for Phil or for Pam?
Yeah, so on, so on the design, prior to the four-laning, the turn lanes will be incorporated into that initial design?
With, with the, the turn lanes will be installed with the signal.
Okay, and that will happen as this is developed? And then the design for the four-laning will happen at a later date?
They need the signal in place for them to open. We just need to get started as soon as possible. They're doing mast arms, and they take a long time.
Okay, and then, this is probably more maybe from Mr. Rodriguez, just my interpretation of legalese. So on section three, where it talks about the transportation impact fee credits for improvements, towards the bottom of that paragraph, let me see what, let me just read the whole bottom section, because I'm not sure where I want to start. So notwithstanding the foregoing or anything to the contrary in this agreement, if, after design and bidding, the projected cost of the transportation improvements exceeds the transportation impact fees for the project, which I'm assuming is the 1.4 quoted, then the city shall first have the option to cover any shortfall by providing written notice within five business days of receipt of the cost estimate, or if the city declines or does not respond timely, then the city and developer agree in good faith to reduce the scope of the transportation improvements to equal the transportation impact fees for the project. What does that tell me? Like, in my head, I'm thinking, oh, we've, we've gone through the turn lanes, and we've done some signalization, and we've hit the $1.4 million mark, and then all of a sudden the design work is going to go beyond that, and we've got to make another decision whether or not we want design work done. Just talk me through what that means to me.
Think, I mean, I, it's not necessarily a legalese, I think you can defer this to Pam for this, this response. I mean, this is what the mechanisms for that...
I call that backup language, based on the projects that I've been doing and the discussions that we've had about how much it's going to cost, because there's no right-of-way involved here. I expect that the signal and the design cost will come in less than the $1.4 million, and they're still going to owe us impact fee money.
Okay, but then the design work for the four-laning, is that, would that get us closer to the 1.4? Like, when all's said and done, is 1.4 going to cover the design of the intersection with the signalization and the four-laning for that design? And that, it's kind of a wash from an impact fee perspective?
Yes, but I still think designing the road and installing the signal is going to come in at less than $1.4 million.
Understood, okay.
The, the whole thing, and if I wasn't confident, we probably wouldn't have written the agreement this way.
Yeah, I would just want to know if, if things change, like, I would certainly wouldn't want to, okay, if it goes past a certain mark, and we're saying that the city and developer could decide, well, we're going to de-scope the, the whole effort, because it's money-driven, I would hope that we would be able to re-contemplate that as a council to say, you know, is that really what we want? Because what I'm voting for today is the design, the turn lanes, the signalization, and the design work for the four-laning, and I'm assuming that that's covered with what we're voting on today.
And, and, yes, you're right, that would have to come back to you for me to ask for more money, but the money that we're collecting along the corridor is all earmarked for this, so I would hope that we would agree that, and I don't expect it to be, but if it is more than that, it would be worth spending money to complete that portion of the project.
Okay, but we'll be able to see that if that were to happen.
If, if that were to happen, yes, sir, I can't just spend the money without asking you.
You don't want to?
No, not really.
Any questions, or anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, Phil, come back, we'll, we'll look to approve the major development plan for North Star Logistics Center.
Ma'am, let me just ask, Phil, they've already started clearing this particular project, right?
One question.
Okay.
All right. Look for a motion to approve the major development plan for North Star Logistics Center.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now I need a motion to approve the CLPF cadence North Star LLC transportation impact fee credit agreements.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Uh, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Ordinance number 2818. Susan?
Ordinance number 2818. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from high-density residential 15, HDR 15, to high-density residential 25, HDR 25, for certain real property generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Keene Road and Ocoee-Popka Road, and owned by Francis Heidrick Jr. and Kathy Campbell Tolbert, comprising 21.59 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Bobby, no changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2818.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2872.
Ordinance number 2872. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T and to planned development PD for certain real property located at 2302 Ocoee-Popka Road, comprising 21.56 acres more or less, and owned by Francis Heidrick Jr. and Kathy C. Tolbert, providing for directions to the community development director, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Okay, Bobby?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Bobby Hall, Planning Manager. Subject property is located at 2302 Ocoee-Popka Road and is approximately 21.56 acres in size. Of the 21.56 acres, approximately 5.05 are in Medicine Lake, and 2.43 are located within the floodplain of Medicine Lake. The developable land area is approximately 14.08 acres. Proposed change of zoning to PD planned development is being requested by the prospective developer, who proposes to construct a 304-unit apartment complex and a total of eight buildings under the HDR 25 future land use designation. Permitted uses in the PD is limited to multifamily residential. Prohibited uses are anything other than multifamily residential uses. Total of eight apartment buildings, consisting of four three-story and four four-story buildings, are provided and detailed on the site plan. Access to the site is proposed by a full access located on Ocoee-Popka Road. A secondary emergency access is located on the northern portion of the site, so the full access portion is right here, left turn lane going into the site from the south, and then a right turn lane coming in from the north, and the full access point is located here on the northern portion of the site. A 12-foot-wide bike trail is being provided by the applicant, and they're going to dedicate that to the city along Ocoee-Popka Road. And now, I'm going to tag in Pam Richmond, who will discuss the forthcoming transportation impact fee very much.
So this is the second agreement, and you're, I'm not asking you to approve it today. It will come back with the second reading, but I wanted you to see it in advance, so if we needed to talk about it, or if you needed more information. But what this developer has proposed is designing the segment of Keene Road from, or of Ocoee-Popka Road, from just south of Keene Road, north to where the Ocoee-Popka Road is already four-laned, donating 30 feet of right-of-way, and they will also install a signal at the intersection of Keene and Ocoee-Popka Road. It's depending on when the development across the street comes in, which is a, how am I supposed to call them? An unnamed grocer, an other retailer, comes in. They are a little bit behind this development. When they come in, they'll actually build the road and do the, the full signal. This will be a temporary signal that just will make things safe until we can get the signal in on the mast arms with turn lanes. And the reason we have to wait on that is because we need the right-of-way from the developer across the street in order to widen the road and, and to do it to its ultimate configuration. And there are things built into this agreement that if we get synced up better with that development across the street, and we want them to stop with their design, so, and just go straight to the design for the ultimate build-out, which is the four lanes of Ocoee-Popka Road, and then turn lanes on Keene Road also, and go straight to the mast arms, they will simply pay us $200,000 as their proportionate share. This, I, I, I think this is a good deal for the city, because the design in of itself is, is very expensive. When the development comes across the street, then we're going to be ready to go straight to construction. They're also going to do the construction for us, so they can do it faster and cheaper than we can.
Any questions for Pam or Bobby?
Just wanted to make a couple comments on this one, and the last piece of business was obviously tied to this one, and I've been on the dissenting side of this vote a couple times, but I did have a chance to meet with the team prior to this hearing, and, you know, again, when we first started talking about this geographic area and doing up to 25 dwelling units per acre, that would be the max, and so for this project specifically, I think in the lead-in packet we said the max was 371. Even at the last hearing, I think it was around 350. Now they've gone all the way down to 304, I think, so it's gone down almost 50 since the last hearing. So I really appreciate the team kind of bringing that number down, so it's not, we're not trying to throttle max density on this piece of property. I think the really significant factor for me is, you know, right now, even besides this development, that roadway needs some of the improvements that this team is committing to doing for us. The signalization certainly, and some of the design work for that pretty hairy curve that's right there, so I applaud the, the team for making some concessions for the benefit of the, the greater good, and I, you know, obviously, we want to see the detail in the particular impact fee agreement like we just approved for the other piece of business. So devil's in the details, but I have, I have confidence.
This is what you asked for, Commissioner, so we're happy to bring that too.
Okay, anybody else?
And I just wanted to say also, we, we appreciate what the developer is doing in order to assist us. They have an, Ocoee-Popka Road, you know, that's been one of my pet peeves about getting that taken care of, and I believe it was a, a year ago that there was a fatality there at that particular intersection. So I appreciate what's been done. Thank you for your efforts.
And I would tell you, Commissioner, that we're definitely getting the long side of this development, or of, of this deal. We're getting, their impact fees are somewhere around $660,000, and we're getting a lot more than $660,000 worth of improvements from them.
I certainly want to congratulate staff, and that would be you, Pam, because you drive a hard bargain. That's what I hear from the developers. When they speak to me, they go, oh, Pam, we have to give, we have to give what she wants, so thank you, because you really do, you really do push to make sure that the impact of their products, that they also realize that their impact affects our infrastructure, and you, and, and you make a deal where, you know, it's, it's a fair, an expense that they should burden. So thank you, Pam, for what you're doing, and thank you for giving me the tour, because when I see these projects on paper, I, I just can't see them, but when I go and visually see them, and she actually took me for a three-hour ride, then I can understand how these developments are coming in. So I thank you for the time that you do give me when I come and ask.
Yeah, I would echo that as well, and, and full disclosure, I did get to speak with them as well, and all of the, the things that have been mentioned already, that, that's, this is a real big win, I think, for us in that corridor, and the quality of the project, product, I think is very befitting, so I'm excited about it.
Yeah, I tell you, the, the whole team is really, you know, focused, as, as we've all talked about, Apopka-Coe Road and getting it to where it needs to be, and there's a lot of, a lot of challenges, and, you know, some people, you know, grown about, you know, new development, but without new development, we wouldn't be able to get some of these improvements that, that were needed 10 years ago and will be needed, you know, 10 years into the future. So, yeah, thanks for the team, you know, kind of really keeping their eye on the ball and making sure that as the new guys come in, that we, we were able to get those improvements that will make that, that, that trip safe from, you know, Popka all the way to Ocoee, so thank you. All right, anybody from the, the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2872 at first reading.
So moved.
Boy, howdy.
Wow, that was fun.
Got a first, first by Commissioner, Bankson, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2849, second reading.
Ordinance number 2849. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from residential, multifamily, R and M, community commercial, CC, and transitional T to planned development PD for certain real property located at 1801 Marley Road, 1890 and 1900 South Popcorn Avenue, comprising 69.65 acres more or less, and owned by Emerson Point Phase Two LLC, providing for directions to community development director, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Okay. Staff and applicant are requesting a continuance of the second reading and the adoption of ordinance number 2849 to a date certain of November 3rd, 2021, to allow for additional time to draft the planned development agreement.
Okay, any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Okay, if not, look for a motion to approve a continuance of the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2849 to a date certain of November 3rd, 2021.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2868.
Ordinance number 2868. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from PD planned development district to RSF 1B residential, single-family district, large lot, for certain real property located south of Shopkey Road and east of Plymouth-Srento Road, comprising with 14.7 acres more or less, and owned by Fellowship, Directions Fellowship, providing for severability and providing for impact of date.
Phil?
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from PD planned development district to RSF 1B residential, single-family, large lot district for approximately 14.7 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located south of Shopkey Road and east of Plymouth-Srento Road. Single-family homes and agricultural properties are in the surrounding area. The proposed RSF 1B zoning is found within the surrounding area, as well as subdivisions that are developed in a manner similar to the RSF 1B zoning standards. The proposed zoning is compatible with the existing low-density residential future land use. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to RSF 1B, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2868 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 3rd, 2021. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
I'm, I'm just confused, so they're going from one zoning to another zoning, but they're, but both zonings would require a special exception for them to use it as intended?
The, the planned development, in the way that it's written, I don't believe permits places of worship, and so to rezone the parcel to RSF 1B would...
Yeah, PDs are for specific purposes and that one didn't allow it.
Okay, so PD is, completely doesn't allow it, not even via a special exception? The residential that you're trying to rezonate to would still have to go through the special exception process, but it's allowable if it gets past that review?
It brings up the zoning, that's all.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
It brings up the zoning, so it's a straight zoning classification versus PD. PD, you have, you have specific uses for a PD, whether it's a residential subdivision built a certain way or has a mixed use on it. In this case, what we're doing is taking the PD off, because it does not apply to the church. So we're getting rid of the PD, which is, it's kind of erroneous type, it's almost like a transitional in this case, like holding, it was done prior to the church...
So, so by going this route, you're creating a zoning classification, zoning classification where you can do it through special exception, and it jives with the land use that it's tied to, is that correct? Because otherwise, if you like rezoned it to something that would be a permissible use or permitted use for a church, you'd have to change the land use along with it, is that correct? Okay.
Okay.
So really, at the end of the day, it's really up to the planning commission to, to determine whether or not it's going to be for a church use, otherwise it just goes back to the compatible zoning classification that's around it right now.
Land use, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions, first then?
Just to add, I know the founders since the mid-'80s, and I think it's going to be a real benefit to our community. They're a great group, and they're, they're, they're real community-minded.
They're, they're a great addition.
They've held that, they've held that property for a long time now, so when they, they, are they here?
They're, they're on the corner of, no, they're not here.
No, they're not here?
No.
Oh, my only concern is because of, you know, having lived here 17 years, and we had the eyesore of I-4 that is still under construction, that when we start to build a church, that it gets built within a reasonable timeframe.
It's only 35 feet maximum.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you, you know what I'm talking about, that, yeah, because I've been here 17 years, and, and that always shows up, that one... Yeah, because I've been here 17 years, and, and that always shows up, that one particular building. And it's, I think, going on 30 years that it has taken that, that particular church to finish their building.
It's not a church.
Okay. That was my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2868 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2870.
Ordinance number 2870. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county, low, medium density residential to commercial for certain real property located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake Doe Boulevard, comprising 2.3 acres more or less, and owned by Lloyd Bearden, providing for severability and for ineffective date.
Allison?
Allison Williams, Planner One with the city's planning division. Subject property is located at 1424 and 1432 West Orange Blossom Trail. The subject property was annexed into the city limits on September 8, 2021, via ordinance number 2866. The applicant is requesting a small-scale future land use amendment to change the future land use designation from county, low, medium density residential to city commercial. The application is being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the subject property from county A1 to CC. DRC recommends approval, planning commission recommends approval, and staff and applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Allison? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2870 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2869.
Ordinance number 2869. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the zoning from county A1 Citrus Royal District to District to City CC Community Commercial District, Community Commercial District, sorry, for certain real property located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake Doe Boulevard, comprising 2.3 acres more or less, and owned by Lord B. Bearden, providing for severability and providing for ineffective date.
Allison?
The request is to rezone a 2.3-acre parcel of land from county A1 Citrus Royal District to community commercial CC. The subject property is located at 1424 and 1432 West Orange Blossom Trail. The property was annexed into the city on September 8, via ordinance number 2866. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property to expand his veterinary practice. The application is being processed concurrently with the small-scale future land use amendment. DRC recommends approval, staff recommends approval, planning commission recommends approval. Staff and applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Allison? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2869 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2871.
Ordinance number 2871. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to C Corridor Commercial District for certain real property north of East Welch Road and west of Rock Springs Wood, comprising of 3.99 acres more or less, and owned by Mary F. Reed Estate, providing for severability and providing for ineffective date.
Allison Williams, Planner One with the city's planning division. The subject property is located at 1506 Rock Springs Road. Property was annexed into the city on March 6, 2019, via ordinance number 2713. The request is to rezone a 3-point acre parcel from T Transitional to C COR Corridor Commercial. The proposed development is a gas station, medical office, and coffee shop. DRC recommends approval, staff recommends approval, planning commission recommends approval, and staff and applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
And I know we have Commissioner Moore here. One of the things that we, I guess Pam was talking with, didn't even know this, that because the, the right-of-way and the road is in the county's jurisdiction, that, that, because with the number we'd heard was a million dollars for that, the Duke Power pole to be moved, you know, back the 10 feet that we've asked the applicant to donate to the city, that million-dollar expenditure, I guess, is an agreement that, that they have with the county. They don't have to, it's, Duke has to make that, that move, and with, doesn't cost the county any money. I wish we had that same kind of agreement. So thank you, county, for owning Rock Springs Road from, from Welch going north. But, so I thought it was kind of a, an interesting bit of information that will save us all a lot of money. So anyway, the applicant want to come up just real quick? Yeah, John? Jonathan? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Hules with the Lowndes Law Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando. I also have in the audience our, our project team from the developer. And as, as was stated before you today, is the first reading of, of the map change, and then what would follow would be actually the site plan that would go through and provide detail to kind of the conceptual plan. Just so you know, we have been working with both planning, staff, and Pam, and we have participated in calls with county transportation folks on coordinating, you know, and what our access will look like, because we'll have to get that, those driveway permits from the county ultimately before this project is developed, and also the dedication of the 10 feet that is proposed to be 12 feet, sorry. Wasn't a double-checker math.
Pam did better than I thought.
Hopefully that doesn't break the project, but we'll, we'll find that two feet. But, yeah, and so that, that's also been discussed, and that will be coordinated with, in conjunction with the site plan. But we...
So, just with disclosure, I did speak with Jonathan, and I'm, I'm kind of happy we're finally doing something in that corner, because it's been so dropped, so dropped. And, and I think that corner can really use some commercial sidewalks. It is a heavily traveled, with foot pedestrians. And so I think it will improve that, the traffic and the foot pedestrians.
And certainly activate that corridor all the way down to the intersection.
And certainly provide some safety for the 55 and over, 55 and over community that is part of the county. And it was something that, that little piece of sidewalk has been missing forever and a day. So I'm kind of, so I have to thank the developer for actually, again, when you bring a product into our city, the fact that you consider the impact that you do on our infrastructure. So I thank you, Jonathan, and of course, working with the county and the developer.
And Pam.
And Pam. And that's right. I always forget, because that's, every developer who has spoken to me, when they mention Pam, they go, she really drives a hard bargain. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a chance to meet with Mr. Hules as well, and, you know, again, this piece of business before us today is not the real important part of it. The site plan is the most key, because those, the transportation ingress, egress out of this location, we have to get right, because, you know, everything north of Welch on Rock Springs Ridge is just a, it's a crapshoot right now, and it's just got to be a very concerted effort to get this one right. So zoning is small potatoes compared to what the site plan discussion needs to be.
But I, I did send Jonathan to go sit up there. I said, I need you to go and just sit up there and see. And I, I think we were met here a little later in the afternoon, and I said, this is a good time for you to go see what happens up there.
And I did, and I saw what happens at that 7-Eleven entrance. I mean, it happened when I was there, so I was like, oh. But we're going to guard against any sort of illegal movement to whatever the greatest degree possible. You know, I think the, the difference between this project and across the street is, you know, the traffic control device that's affectionately known as a pork chop, I think that was a later ad to that driveway.
Just rescind me, yeah.
And this one will be principally designed to function well. You know, we'll have all the turning radius figured out. I mean, we've already discussed, talking with the county of, give us, we're, we'd love to put in whatever the strongest pork chop you could put in that's, that's safe and doesn't, you know, cause a nuisance itself. And another thing that I'd mention, and again, this is the layperson, I mean, having no traffic skills at all. But, you know, one of the things is, you know, if you are tying in to the, the commercial that's to the north of that property, you know, is there any opportunity to, and I hate recommending creating new intersections that are signalized, but an opportunity to create one north of Welch and Rock Springs to go, and you would have to re-engineer the Publix parking lot, but something that goes straight across there to alleviate, you know, all the right-in, right-out problems, but give people opportunities to go northbound, southbound from those commercial areas.
If I may, you may recall, we're doing a study with Metro Plan Orlando and Orange County, and I think Commissioner wants to come up and talk about that. And we are addressing that. This, the reason this is so key is because without that 12 feet, and it is 12 feet, we never have enough room there to make improvements here. But we're looking at what you're talking about as part of that study a little further up, and I acknowledge something is needed up there.
Yeah, okay. Just as long as it's on y'all's radar, that's good.
All right. Commissioner Moore, I know you've been, you've been chomping at the bit. Come on up.
Orange County Commissioner Christine Moore, I was just here, actually, in another issue, but this is a great news, and I probably grabbed Jonathan on the way out to talk about something else with regards to this. But yes, the Metro Plan, Mayor Nelson and I sit on the board for Metro Plan, so this is, this area is a big subject of a study, which is much more significant and robust than just this intersection. As you know, you know, this has been years going, trying to get this intersection improved. And so we had tried some things together that didn't work. We had to go backwards. We changed the pork chop. And so I can tell you, Orange County staff has been actively in, in conversation with Jonathan and his developer. And so you'll see, I'm sure, a lot of improvements in the area. I did not know about the poll, that the county had some agreement. That was news to me, so I'm happy to hear about that. The one thing that I just would like to bring up, because it, and I know Commissioner Velazquez has heard about this, our folks over there in the, in the senior-only park just to the west of this have never had a sidewalk, and it's just been tragic watching them try to get to the Publix. And so I talked to Jonathan, I'm happy that little piece is mine, if there's some way I can contribute and they can build this sidewalk. We were waiting, and they probably think I forgot about it, but I haven't. It's just been three, four years since this project is coming. So I just wanted to put it on your radar that we have to have that contiguous sidewalk through this parcel. And I guess when you get into the site work, you can work on that so that we can get those folks, because they're literally our people in wheelchairs and elderly that can't get to the Publix. So look forward to, to seeing your site plan. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay. If not, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2871 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Did you say, did you say it? Okay. I wasn't sure.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2873.
Ordinance number 2873. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the city of Apopka Comprehensive Plan, adding a property rights element, including a goal, objective, and policies, including statements of property rights as provided in Section 163.1, 3177, Para 6 Florida statutes, as required by recently adopted Chapter 2021-195 Laws of Florida, providing for findings of fact, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for ineffective date.
Thank you. Bobby Howell, planning manager. This is a mandated requirement for a comprehensive plan from the state legislature to adopt a property rights element. If we don't adopt it, we can't adopt a large-scale future land use amendments, so it is required per state law. The planning commission considered this and recommended approval unanimously, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2873 at first reading and authorize transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2881.
Ordinance number 2881. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Apopka by amending Chapter 46 Parks and Recreation, Section 46, 46-3, Permit for Group Activities to Refer to the Park and Recreation Department, by amending Chapter 46, Section 46, Dash 4, Hours of Operation to Appropriately Reference the Parks and Recreation Department, by amending Chapter 46, Section 46, Dash 7, Use of Picnic Areas to Appropriately Reference the Parks and Recreation Department, by amending Chapter 46, Section 46, Dash 8, Miscellaneous Regulations to Provide the Domesticated Animal Regulations in City Parks, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for Effective Date.
That's everything?
Anything left?
So the primary purpose of this is really...
Name it, name.
I'm sorry. Brian Foreman. Primary purpose of this is to address Section 46, Dash 8 of the Code of Ordinances, which currently reads in part, "It shall be unlawful to permit any domesticated animal to be in any municipal park." So we want to adjust it to say, "It shall be the duty of the owner of any domestic animal or anyone having a domestic animal in his or her possession to keep the domestic animal leashed under secure restraint, within a vehicle parked or motioned, or caged, or tethered in the open bed of a pickup truck at all times when visiting any public park except in an area of a public park designated as dog park. No person having in charge or custody any domesticated animal shall permit, allow, or suffer such domesticated animal to enter upon or remain within any playground or park area reserved for children, or to enter any sandbox or play apparatus. The owner of every domesticated animal shall be responsible for the removal of any excreta deposited by their animal or animals on public walks, public parks, or in recreation areas. And any person issued a citation pursuant to the subsection C shall be deemed to be charged with a civil infraction. A fine of $25 shall be assessed for each violation." So basically, we're allowed dogs on leashes and cats, if you want, domesticated animals. They have to clean up after themselves, they won't go in a playground, they won't go on a field that, like at Northwest, we're not going to let them on, on a field or anything like that, so.
That includes the sports fields.
Correct, exactly. Yes.
Let me, let me kind of go back, back up. I didn't know if he was going to bring kind of the background of this. Well, Will Carey along with, I guess, the chamber, I don't know if the chamber was involved. Anyway, so they were going to have a barks and whine, or what? I can't remember the, park and bark for, it was going to be on the 20th, 20th, the Saturday...
Yeah, it was going to be, yeah.
Like in two weeks, and they'd already promoted it, and they can't bring dogs to the park. Well, we've always kind of talked about letting, allowing dogs to park. Well, all of a sudden, we're, we've only got three weeks to pull this off. And so the reason we've gone to a first reading this week, and we moved the council meeting from two weeks away to next week, is so we could accommodate Will Carey, which now he's changed the date anyway, but we...
We changed the date because it was, because we did get a no at first. So...
Yeah.
Because we were not aware that we were not able to have dogs in the park. But Kate Manley, Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce, we did, did vote as a board today to support this resolution, or to support this ordinance, because we discovered, just in our conversations, that many of us travel to other communities in order to enjoy our pets in the park and other venues, because they're not allowed here in Apopka. And so we feel like this would be a great opportunity for us to be able to bring together not only bark in the park, but other opportunities for people to bring and enjoy and stay in Apopka and enjoy our beautiful parks right here with our dog. Hopefully another cat.
I think it's a doggone good idea.
I do. I do. I do think it's a good idea, and it's, it's time, because when we have the Women's Fowlage Festival, I can't tell you how many people sneak their dogs in their pockets and that thing. And I feel so bad, but, I mean, we had the night out yesterday at Emerson Park, and, and it was filled with families and, and the family dogs. And, and it was really just a friendly atmosphere. And so we, I think we can also have that, too, in our parks.
Yeah.[1793.62] Yeah, fully support it as a dog owner. My only question, so on the first sentence, though, I just want to make sure that we have it legally covered. So on where it talks about anyone having a domestic animal in his or her possession to keep the domestic animal leashed or secure restraint within a vehicle parked or in motion or caged or tethered in an open bed of a pickup truck, what I'm getting at is, it's not okay for someone to tether their dog in the open bed of a pickup truck and then go off somewhere else. Is it written in a way that they have to be kind of attended? Because I don't think we want to get into that kind of a situation. Or is, leading off by saying in possession, does that cover that remark?
It's, this was simply a regulation within the park areas because the city's Animal Control Code refers to the county code, and county, county animal control is one that enforces the animal code. Any tethering ordinances really have to defer to the county for enforcement, because we don't have, the city doesn't have its own code. This is simply a regulation for, once you enter into our parks, it's really a parks regulation more than an animal control regulation. Do you understand?
So.
The way that our code is written, we don't have our own animal control code. The city code refers to the county animal control code, and county animal control enforces the animal code within the City of Apopka. So if somebody leaves a dog tethered in a car in a park, animal control is called, and then we're going to refer to the county code, and the county will then initiate enforcement action into that.
But what we're not saying is not acceptable for owners of these animals to kind of leave a tethered animal in the open bed of their truck or in their car parked and all that sort of thing.
Correct. If you do so, you're going to be violating a county code, and then the county will come and enforce.
Okay, just wanted to get that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, you got a.
I don't have a dog, but I'm in favor of it.
Don't I have a dog in this fight?
No. I'm in favor of it.
All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve, which one, approve ordinance number 2881 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, first by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2883.
Ordinance number 2883. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending chapter six, alcoholic beverages, section six, dash three, possession or consumption in a public place, to authorize Parks and Recreation Director and Development Review Committee to permit possession and consumption in public parks, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for conflicts and an effective date.
So the purpose of this change in the Code of Ordinances is to primarily accommodate time-sensitive requests and allow staff to move forward with the approval process of alcohol in parks, so that's in recreation facilities and that nature. So that is in line with other cities in the area do allow staff to go ahead and approve without bringing it to city council.
Any questions for Brian on this? So just, yeah, we just, we had a couple of times where somebody had forgotten to ask us about having alcohol in the park for an event, and because of the way the city council meeting fell, we couldn't bring it to city council, so I figured at least have, it'll either be the director or Edward would have to approve it, and so it's, you still got some accountability and oversight as to that ordinance.
Well, I think another important part, Mayor, is that the DRC will also be able to look at this as they look at through the process. When you apply for a permit and you want to go through, you have to make sure that you go through the DRC to make sure that police, fire, and everybody's been involved. It'll be good for them to have a set of eyes on it too for the approval.
Which they do already, yes.
So what it's basically saying, they still, when they do the permit, they still have to go to DRC, but if the event is before our city council meeting, then it would give you the authority, and Brian, to say yes. Okay.
For an event, for an event in a park.
For an event.
For an event, yeah. Keep in mind that the street, anything street, right-of-way, still has to come back to council. So if you're going to do a big street, if it's going to be out on the streets of the sidewalks and the right-of-ways, then you guys still would have to approve those. But this would be for events in the parks.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve, which one?
To approve?
Ordinance number 2883 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Oh, okay, second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I know that he's coming up, because I see him, Varek. Give me two minutes, I'll be back.
These are just, these are just treatments. You're okay, you, we can.
Okay, you can go.
Okay, everybody, okay, that's fine. Take a five-minute recess, thank you.
Okay.
Look what you did to him. Come on, Chuck. Bring it back to order. Chuck Vabrick, ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Ready to go.
Okay, Susan?
Mayor, city council.
You've got to wait, unless she needs to read the ordinance.
Okay. Resolution number 2021-34. A resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to extend the territorial limits of the Oaks at Kelly Park Municipal Service Benefits Unit to include Phase Three and to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Oaks of Kelly Park Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.3632, parant three, parant A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, city council, Chuck Vabrick, city administration. This particular resolution deals with adding an additional phase to the Oaks at Kelly Park Street Lighting District, which was created last year. If you have any questions, any concerns, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chuck? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-34.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
I think it was Banksen.
Banksen.
Okay, Banksen, Becker, okay. Vote carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-35.
Resolution number 2021-35. A resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties located within the Winding Meadows Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.3632, parant three, parant A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And I'll try to make this quick and simple. Items 12 through 18 are simply creating the new districts for new developments. I'll be more than happy to answer any of the questions as she reads through each of the resolutions, but hopefully it'll speed things up.
Any questions for Chuck? Okay, not, we'll close the public, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-35.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance, resolution number 2021-36.
Right, resolution number 2021-36. A resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Poncan Reserve Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.3632, parant three, parant A of the Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Just bring this, just Poncan Reserve lighting, okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-36.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-37.
Okay, resolution 2021-37. A resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Hammock at Rock Springs Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.3632, parant three, parant A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Just another.
Any questions?
Yes, Hammock, Rock Springs Street Lighting Special Assessment. Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-37.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-38.
Okay, resolution number 2021-38. Resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Nottingham Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.36, point, point 3632, parant three, parant A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Okay.
Any questions from the council?
All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-38.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-39.
Resolution 2021-39. A resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the non, to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Windrose Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.3632, parant three, parant A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Again, any questions from the council? I'll be more than happy to answer.
All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2021-39. So moved, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-40.
Resolution 2021-40. A resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Coke Property Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 197.3632. Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632/3A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and for an effective date.
Again, any questions from the council?
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-40.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Resolution number 2021-41. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Fairclaw Lake Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, and programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632/3A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Any questions from the council?
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a Resolution to approve, or Resolution 2021-41.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, Appeal of Planning Commission granting special exception to the.
Mayor, can I just interject one thing real quick?
Sure.
We have two more that'll be coming to you all for approval, and I just want to make the council aware. One is going to be a neighborhood improvement district, which is for level terrace. The HOA has dissolved itself and turned mostly into a rental or investment property area, and that retention pond is overgrown. So if y'all get the opportunity, you may want to just go in there and look at it so you know what you'll be approving when that comes back to you, and then we have one more street lighting to come to you.
Where is this thing?
Level terrace. Level terrace.
Right across from the entrance to Popka Middle.
Oh, okay.
It's, yeah, it's on Volto, and it's right opposite there.
Right off of Volto, it's the first entrance, right off of Volto.
Yeah, it's opposite where the school buses pass.
Yes.
Park.
Mr. Vabrick.
I just want to say thank you, because you gave me so much time yesterday to explain this whole process, so thank you.
No, not at all. Any idea what this, I mean, because it's, you know, it's a lot of, you know, a lot of effort for Chuck to get this done, but, I mean, long-term, what's the savings to the city? Obviously, we're putting it back on the communities that are benefiting from these lighting. Any idea what we've already accomplished now as far as, you know, taking it off the cities?
Well, if you look at the ones that took effect this year, you've got close to $200,000 that have been passed back to those particular developers.
Neighborhoods, okay.
The one in and of itself was a hundred and some thousand dollars.
So, right, so it's substantial, and that's forever. It's not, not, yeah, okay.
And it's not been published yet, but Edward and myself have been notified by Duke Energy that their legacy products, being the old streetlights, are, have been approved by the Public Services Commission to increase by about 30%. So we are working to identify where we can convince Duke to go in and also make some adjustments to move them to the newer products as fast as we can, but that won't be an overnight process, it'll be a long-term process.
Well, thank you, Chuck, for all your hard work on this.
Not at all, sir.
Awesome. Susan, or is this Michael's? Susan, you want to read the ordinance title?
It's not an ordinance.
Are you reading? Appeal of Planning Commission granting special exception to the Smoke Exchange Narab Global for tobacco shop in an MUD mixed-use downtown zoning district.
Okay. Prior to having the applicant make their presentation, I'm simply going to introduce and set the parameters for this hearing. This is an appeal of a decision, of a final decision by the Planning Commission of an application for a special exception for the use that is explained above. For the applicant is the Smoke Exchange Narab Global, and the special exception was for the operation of a tobacco shop in the MUD zoning district. As an appeal under the code, the City Council has jurisdiction to hear appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission in regards to special exceptions. Now, an appeal before this City Council is limited to the record presented before the Planning Commission. What that means is that the applicant cannot make new arguments that were not presented or reviewed by the Planning Commission in its determination in regards to the special exception. Your standard of review is basically, was the Planning Commission's decision, and in this case, the decision of the Planning Commission was to approve a special exception for a tobacco shop in the MUD zoning district with conditions, was that decision based on competent substantial evidence? Competent substantial evidence is defined as that evidence a reasonable mind would accept to support a conclusion. So you will hear the arguments of the applicant that he is making in order to claim, to basically state that the decision of the Planning Commission to grant the special exception for a tobacco shop with conditions was not based on competent substantial evidence and was, and the quote is, "the code provides," is that there was clear and demonstrative error in their decision or interpretation of the code. So at this point, I'll allow the applicant to make their presentation. I will rebut any arguments on behalf of the city. You may ask questions of the applicant during their presentation. There's no restrictions. You are, at this point, you are acting as an appellate court, the equivalent of an appellate court. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so prior to commencing, I would like for, to ask the council if any of you have had any quasi, sorry, any ex parte communications with the applicant. If you have so, please divulge them now.
Yes, I have.
Okay.
No.
No.
Okay, so at that point, I'll defer the, I'll yield the floor to the applicant to make their presentation.
You said yes? Okay. So I gotta put that down.
For the record, my name is Brent Spain. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Theriak in Spain, 1809 Edgewater Drive, Orlando, Florida. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today on behalf of the applicant, Karim Global, and Principal Chris Segerin. With me this afternoon is Heather Earlweiler, who's over there. And what was handed out to you is a packet which will assist as I walk through our PowerPoint. Those are all documents that have already been introduced into the public record, they're public documents. We've just organized them in a packet, so they're all in one place, so it's easier as I go through our appeal. But as the city attorney indicated, this is an appeal of a special exception. It's a little different than the ordinary appeal in that the special exception was actually approved by the planning board. In normal circumstances, you'd probably have someone like me standing before you that's challenging a denial, but this is an approval. The issue is really the two conditions that were imposed on this special exception. So with that said, I'll jump into our PowerPoint presentation. Briefly, I just wanted to go over sort of how we got here, and there's a copy of our PowerPoint in the packet. There's also, hopefully you can see it on the screen, but this wasn't just a process of we came in and asked for a special exception. This process started back in May of 2021. The applicant applied for a CRA grant. That grant was approved, and that is in Exhibit 14 and 15. A building permit was subsequently issued by the city for interior renovations on this property, which, as we stand here today, it's just due west of me. That was in June of 2021, and then actually in July of 2021, a temporary CO was issued for the applicant's business. And then at the end of July, they applied for their business tax receipt in order to, that's sort of the last step in order to open your business, as you all know. At that time, the applicant was notified by staff for the first time that a special exception would be required for the proposed smoke shop. And it's important to note that all the applications, the grant application, the building permit application, everything referenced this use as a smoke shop. So in light of staff advising that a smoke, the smoke shop required a special exception application, the applicant filed that on July 27th. The mailed notice that went out, the signs that were posted, all referred to that special exception as a smoke shop, the newspaper ad as well. The staff report was issued for the special exception on or around August 6th of 2021, recommending approval of the special exception. The staff report did not recommend, in the written staff report, the imposition of any conditions on the approval. The Planning Commission heard the matter, obviously, on August 10th, as indicated. They recommended approval of the special exception for a tobacco shop, and we'll get into that change in the terminology as we walk through the slides. My client has since received a final CO from the city. There's been the grant reimbursement. And then in late August, the final business tax receipt was issued, which is Exhibit 3 in the packet, and that's where conditions showed up in writing. The business tax receipt has a condition that says, "Sales of tobacco substitutes such as kratom, e-cig, and vape are not permitted." Ms. Earlweiler then requested a copy of the Planning Commission's final decision. That was provided to us around September 2nd, and that's at Exhibit 4, and that's really the document that our appeal is based on. And you'll see in that written decision, there are two conditions imposed on the use that I'm going to walk through and submit. Not only are they not supported by competent substantial evidence, but they are contrary to the city's code and to Florida law. And on September 9th, we timely filed the appeal that's before you this afternoon. So with that background, we've got, this is just a site map. This is taken from the staff report before the Planning Commission. So on the left, you can see the black and white. The site in all the staff reports is listed as 60 East 5th Street. Our client actually uses an address of 52 East 5th Street, but you can see the aerial, it's an existing commercial building, it's a multi-tenant building. And this next slide, this is just showing the future land use. On the left, you can see it's all commercial, and then on the right is the existing zoning map, which is mixed-use downtown district. So just some brief background on special exceptions under Florida law. As indicated, the staff informed my client in late July, when they were applying for their BTR, that a special exception was needed under the use table in the code. And so under Florida law, my client has the initial burden to prove that they've met your published criteria. Once we satisfy that burden, then the application must be approved unless opponents or the city carry their burden to show that we don't satisfy the city's published criteria. Here, as the fourth bullet indicates, the staff report on its face said, and it's quoted, "The proposed special exception is in compliance with all above referenced standards." And those, in the staff report, those are the special exception standards. So the staff testified that we met all the standards for the special exception. And again, the staff report on its face, as submitted, didn't recommend any imposition of conditions on the applicant's proposal. No one appeared at August 10th meeting and spoke in opposition to this request. And again, in that regard, I refer back to the mailed notice, always referred to this use as a smoke shop. So there wasn't any public outcry about the proposed use. So that brings us to our appeal today. And again, skipping over the first two bullets, because we've touched upon those, it wasn't until the day the Planning Commission meeting that the applicant was advised that there might be a potential issue with the sale of e-cigarettes or vape products. And what occurred is then there was a discussion during the Planning Commission meeting about the definition of tobacco shop and then also this definition of a vape hookah lounge that's in your land development code. And we're going to get to those definitions in one or two slides. But at the end of the August 10th hearing, they voted, they approved it, the special exception, but then we have these two conditions that were imposed. And again, I've quoted them on the slide, but they're in Exhibit 4. But the first condition is no sales of tobacco substitutes such as vape, e-cigarettes, kratom, et cetera, are permitted. And then two, no onsite consumption of cigars or tobacco substitute products are permitted. So really, this appeal has sort of two steps. One is the first condition. So the first condition is the prohibition on the sale of quote-unquote tobacco substitutes, which is not a defined term in the city's land development code or the city's code. But you can see in the first bubble, I've referenced the table, that's the city's use table. And essentially, what occurred was that the proposed smoke shop was deemed most consistent with a quote-unquote tobacco shop, which is classified as a personal service use under the city's land development code. And you'll see on the second bubble, that's an excerpt from the personal services use category in the land development code, and it lists that tobacco shops are allowed and similar uses. That brings us to one of the definitions that became key during the Planning Commission meeting, and that's the definition of tobacco shop. And that's quoted in full in the third bubble, that a tobacco shop is defined as, quote, "an establishment primarily engaged in selling tobacco and tobacco-related products." And we would submit that by imposing the condition of no sale of e-cigarettes and vaping products, that the Planning Commission erred because e-cigarette and vape products are in fact tobacco and tobacco-related products under Florida law and under the city's code, which recognizes e-cigarettes as a tobacco product. So first, this was introduced during the Planning Commission meeting, it's in our packet, but the applicant's state tobacco dealer license authorizes the sale of tobacco products and nicotine products, which by law includes vape products and e-cigarettes. So that would be one ground, is that the license from the state authorizes this under the guise of the tobacco license. Secondly, I think it's important, because there was a question of, well, what is a tobacco product? And the second bullet point here indicates that the FDA actually amended their regulatory authority in 2016, and it's known as the deeming rule, and there's a reference to it, but it extended the regulatory authority of the FDA to reach e-cigarettes. And the reasoning was that that authority was to be extended to cover all tobacco products, including electronic nicotine delivery systems, and that's a high-tech defined term, it's got the acronym ENDS for it, but that is an e-cigarette and a vape device. And the logic is that the e-cigarette contains nicotine that's derived from tobacco, and thus they're subject to being regulated as a tobacco product. So we submit those two points, support overturning and striking that first condition. But to the extent there is any remaining doubt or questions about it, is when you turn to your city's own code, and this is in Section 46, 6 of the city's code, so it's in the regular part of your own code, and it deals with parks and public spaces, but there's a provision in there, and it just exemplifies that the city itself has tied e-cigarettes to the term tobacco products. So you can see I've quoted in its entirety, this is one of the, I think there are 10 bullet points under that code section, but it's entitled "Use of Tobacco Products." And you'll see I've bold and underlined a provision right out of the city's code, and it says, "It is unlawful for a." it says, "It is unlawful for a person to possess or consume, consume any tobacco product, including e-cigarettes." And that was a major issue at the planning commission meeting, is, well, e-cigarettes and vape products are not tobacco products. But this is language out of the city's own code that actually ties an e-cigarette to being defined or falling within the scope of any tobacco product. And again, if we go back a few, you know, slides to the definition of a tobacco shop, it's an establishment primarily engaged in selling tobacco and tobacco-related products.
So you went back to which page? I mean, because you're giving me this all right now, so kind of keep, let me try and keep up with you.
Yeah, so I put it back on the slide.
So which one are you going back to?
It's
Just give me the page number.
Page seven, Commissioner.
Page seven, okay.
Yeah, in the middle, you'll see the third bullet point is the definition of tobacco shop out of the city's code.
Okay.
Which is establishment primarily engaged in selling tobacco and tobacco-related products. And so we've, we've indicated, we believe it's supported by Florida law and the federal regulations, that an e-cigarette is a tobacco product, or at least at a minimum a tobacco-related product. But then I think it's critical that your own code in regulating parks and public spaces makes that connection between a tobacco product, including e-cigarettes. We did look
Can I, can I just interrupt for one second?
Yes, Commissioner.
When I read that, me being a layperson, when they say, "It's unlawful for a person to possess or consume," I'm sorry, "consume any tobacco products, comma, including e-cigarettes," I'm interpreting that as that, in general, laypeople aren't going to understand that an e-cigarette is a tobacco product, so they're just including it. I, I don't see it as a tobacco product.
Well, and I would
Because if it were, then they wouldn't have to have specified that it includes this other product.
But I think that that point actually emphasizes and hits the nail on the head of the point I'm making, is that the city in its code has actually said tobacco products do include e-cigarettes. So if there were any doubt by somebody walking around now in the street, and they were at your park and said, "Oh, well, you can't tell me not to e-
Oh, okay, so I see what you're saying. E-cigarettes, vape products are tobacco and tobacco-related products.
Exactly.
And you said that's in our code.
I'm, I'm pointing to Section 46-6 as an example of this governing body recognizing an e-cigarette as falling within the scope of a tobacco product, because you're specifically calling it out.
Okay.
And we've, we've looked just generally at surrounding communities, you know, to see what Orange County, Ocoee, Mount Dora, Winter Garden, Orlando do. None of those jurisdictions distinguish between tobacco products and vape products. It's all regulated under the same umbrella. And then my last bullet point is I would just point out that the existing zoning would let other uses, including alcoholic beverage establishments at the bar or nightclub, those type of establishments can put in a vending machine if they would like, if they have the license for it, or a consumer goods establishment, which includes a convenience store. We all know, I can go to any convenience store and buy vaping products. So it, it's not as if there's some parade of horribles that's intended to be avoided. So how did the planning commission sort of get to where it got? And at least based on my review, I've watched the video, I've listened to the audio, is that there was this emphasis put on a separate definition in the land development code, which is for the term vape slash hookah lounge. And, you know, the, the argument was made, or the suggestion made, well, this is the only reference to vape, so it must fall within that scope of that definition. And when you look at the scope of that definition, which is quoted in its entirety in the second bubble, "A vape hookah lounge is defined as an establishment primarily used for social consumption of tobacco, tobacco-related, or tobacco-substitute products through vape, e-cigarette, hookah, or similar device." The unrefuted testimony and evidence at the planning commission established that our client's special exception didn't seek or otherwise ask for an approval of a vape or hookah lounge. In fact, our client's business in no way involves the social consumption of any products, tobacco or otherwise, through a vape, an e-cigarette, hookah, or similar device. It entails the retail sales of tobacco and tobacco-related products. That's it. Which again, on page seven, when you look at the definition, definition of a tobacco shop, that's what encompasses an establishment primarily engaged in the selling of tobacco and tobacco-related products. So the fact that the planning commission implicitly, or even explicitly relied on the vape hookah lounge definition, I would submit is just erroneous on its face, because our business doesn't include onsite social consumption. That's a business, we all know what a hookah lounge is, or a smoking lounge, or a cigar bar. You go in there, you sit down, you pull up a chair, you light up a cigar with your buddy, and you talk about whatever you want to talk about. That's not what our client's business is. Our client's business is retail sales. So that definition, to support the imposition of the condition, is completely inapplicable. And then lastly, on condition one, I think it's important to note that effective October 1st, local governments, like it or not, Tallahassee has delivered another gift to you all, and I represent local governments, so I, I understand, but that local governments are preempted by the state now from regulating the sale of tobacco and nicotine products. And that's important, and I've quoted the language there in the second and third bubble, is Chapter 569.0025 of Florida statute says, "It establishes a new minimum age of 21." So the establishment of the minimum age for purchasing or possessing, and the regulation for the marketing, sale, or delivery of tobacco products is preempted to the state. And then the very next statutory section that's quoted does the exact same thing for the marketing, sale, or delivery of nicotine products. The definition of nicotine product under that statute includes e-cigarettes and vaping devices. So in addition to being contrary to the city's land development code, for the reasons I've already discussed, and the state licensing scheme, this new statute as of October 1st preempts the local government from regulating the sale of vape products. The condition that's imposed on the special exception does exactly that, by saying, "You're prohibited from selling these items." Lastly, that condition one also has language, it says, "It also prohibits the sale of kratom, comma, et cetera." And we just have a few points on that. One, the product kratom, to my knowledge and reviewing the record, wasn't even discussed during the planning commission meeting. A special exception is not required under the land development code to even sell kratom. Currently, it is not illegal in Florida.
I was going to ask you, what is it?
It's a, it's actually viewed as a herbal supplement or herbal item. It's made from a Southeast Asian pine type of leaf, vegetative leaf. Folks in different communities either eat it, ingest it, or smoke it, but it is not illegal in the state of Florida, other than Sarasota County passed an ordinance, I think in like 2014 to just make it illegal. But the state of Florida has not done that. So it can be just sold like any other retail item at a store, it could be sold as an herbal item. So again, it, not only was it not mentioned at the planning commission meeting, but it really is outside the scope of what is being requested. And the, the use of the term, et cetera, I would just submit that on it, on its face, that's vague and ambiguous, because I don't know what that means, my client doesn't know what that means. That just opens the door for arbitrary enforcement and saying, "Well, this other item you couldn't do, you can't sell this." Well, why? Well, it says, et cetera, on the condition. So on those grounds, we would respectfully submit that condition one should be stricken, the approval modified to remove that condition. Condition two, as indicated in the approval letter, says, "No onsite consumption of cigars or tobacco-substitute products are permitted." Again, the special exception didn't request any onsite consumption of any tobacco or tobacco-related products. In fact, had we done so, that would have brought us into that definition of a vape slash hookah lounge, which we're not. We would have asked for a special exception to do that. So sort of imposing this condition, I don't know why it was imposed. I presume to help support the perception that we fell within that definition of a vape hookah lounge, so we're going to make sure you don't do that. But again, our, the applicant's business involves the retail sale of tobacco and tobacco-related products. And respectfully, I just think condition two is completely unnecessary. It's inapplicable to the face of the application, and we'd ask that it be stricken. Based on those arguments and the materials submitted before you this evening, including the city's land development code provisions, the state law, our client's state tobacco license that allows for these sales, the FDA regulation of e-cigarettes as a tobacco product, your own code that includes an e-cigarette within the tobacco product, it specifically calls it out, and that new statutory preemption, we would respectfully ask that this council grant our administrative appeal, and that the planning commission's August 10th decision be modified by removing conditions one and two from the approval. Again, the imposition of those conditions, in, in our opinion, respectfully, was erroneous, and it's contrary to law. I mean, our, our client is very anxious to open and operate, in fact, they are open, they're just operating under these conditions, but they're happy and excited to be within the city of Apopka. And these conditions impose a huge financial hardship on them. They've been working, again, essentially for five months to get this business up and running. They've invested thousands and thousands of dollars to get it up and running. They've renovated the interior of a building. So, you know, respectfully, we'd ask that you modify the approval. I'm happy to answer any questions, or our lead planer who helped put together this, this project, or this PowerPoint is available to you for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Spain?
So I, I had watched the testimony of the planning commission when they, when they contemplated this piece of business, and I, I saw where they voted for, to approve the special exception for the tobacco shop. What I didn't hear, and maybe I just missed it, was this, how this, this constraint is written, as you've stated in the letter that you've presented to us, there's no sales of tobacco substitutes such as vape, e-cigarettes, kratom, et cetera, are permitted. Was that a specific call-out and specific language that the planning commission used when they rendered their, their decision? Because I know they had contemplated the, the terminology tobacco-related product. I think as far as one of the planning commission members had inquired if that's nicotine-based, or if there's some sort of nicotine tie-in to what a tobacco-related product is. So what, what was the planning commission's formal motion when they made the decision to make this, approve the special exception as a tobacco shop?
Yeah, and my, my recollection of it is exactly your recollection, is the motion was a motion to approve the special exception for a tobacco shop. These conditions then appeared when our client got the business tax receipt, and then when we asked for the written letter of approval. Where I think they originated from was the discussion during the planning commission meeting that on, well, would these type of uses be allowed within the definition of a tobacco shop? And I think there was some remarks by city staff or the city attorney that, well, we don't specifically define e-cigarette or a vaping product, and there's a definition of vape hookah lounge, and that does reference tobacco substitutes, which would include an e-cigarette in their, in their view. And so I think when the written approval came out, it was then put into it as being implicit in the motion. But the motion wasn't, based on my recollection, we moved to approve the special exception for a tobacco shop, subject to the following two conditions. But our client is in this precarious situation where you have 30 days to appeal, we get the written decision finally, the first week of September, so we file the appeal, I think, on the 29th day, is when we filed it to preserve our rights. The argument could have been made that they imposed conditions that were never even part of the motion.
Correct, and that's where I'm going to have to rely on our, our counsel to provide what the ramifications of, are of those. But, you know, at the end of the day, the planning commission had two, two avenues to go down, and from listening to that testimony, really how it was, high-level first played out was tobacco shop is more what you described, retail, I go there, I patronize the business, I get my product, I leave. The, the hookah vape was more of the, hey, I'm going there as a destination, I'm consuming onsite, I'm doing most of my interaction there on property, and then, and then leaving. And so the final judgment of the planning commission was, yes, you are getting special exception as tobacco shop. And that was my understanding, that was where the, where the motion ended, and it was approved. I think there was one dissenting vote, if memory serves. But yeah, so what you're really asking is for the designation of tobacco shop to, that's the approved decision of the planning commission, just doing away with this kind of further constraint of these tobacco-related items that you think are tobacco-related.
Exactly, I mean, it could be that I'm asking you to say, hey, we, our client was approved for a tobacco shop, and under the city's regs, that encompasses e-cigarettes and vape products.
Okay. Is, so that, that's the only, the only other question I had as it relates to the condition two in terms of onsite consumption, and this is just for staff, it's a staff question. Is there any, so if I look at other types of business that sell tobacco products or tobacco-related products, I go to a convenience store, I buy a pack of cigarettes, is there anything that would preclude me from opening that pack of cigarettes and smoking it within that store prior to me leaving that location?
State statute prohibits you from doing so.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Spain?
But, let me clarify that point. So on that particular one, if the state statute precludes me from going to like a convenience store, opening up a pack of cigarettes, smoking it, the, the way that we would get around it in our LDC is we have a specific definition of a business type where you go for the sole purpose of consuming tobacco products on that premise?
I don't want to take, I mean, what you would do is, because the state statute, because the state has, and the, if, if I, if it's possible, if I may answer that when it's time, I don't want to take into the applicant's time.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I'll lead with that answer.
Yeah, that was just trying to help me put in the right lines the condition number two, but I'll
Right, but I'll lead with that answer.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Spain?
Yeah, I think from the, from the outset, there's a confusion and difference of terms and definitions. I think that's what began to lead down this, this process. From the initial outset, it was proposed as a smoke shop. And vape and e-cigarettes are smokeless, that's the whole thing. So it's an assumption, perhaps at that point, that it, tobacco, and, and we had discussed this, we sat down, and Chris is a very nice man, and this is troubling, because I hate seeing anyone, you know, struggling who wants to open business. I love to see business go forward, but I think at that point, it was not clearly understood that this was inclusive there. Once that became aware, staff didn't add then to our, our code, they simply stated what our code already says, which is the sale was limited. City Code 466 regards the usage, not sales. So I see what you're saying is to try and tie those terms together, it says it there, here, therefore it infers it here. But those are two different codes to me, one is usage, the other is sales. So sales is clearly stated, that it does limit to those things. And unless I'm misunderstanding, that was already there before we got to this point. It's just, when it was understood, that was part of the definition of smoke shop or tobacco shop in the applicant's mind, then it was clarified by shop in the applicant's mind, then it was clarified by staff, wait a minute, this is what our code already states. So, it's not something that was added at that point to limit the applicant, but brought to light when the understanding was, the applicant, his understanding from the beginning was it did include these things. So, again, a confusion of terms. I know when notices went out, for whatever reason, we were not aware of it right next door, or I think we would have probably spoken to that at that point, just because of what is trying to develop here in the center of the city. But regardless, that may have just been misplaced or not seen, it never came to my attention. Again, they're a nicotine-related, not tobacco-related. So, e-cigarettes and vapes are related because of the nicotine that's in them, and to say, well, it comes from the same source, it's still different. That's the whole selling point of these, is it's smokeless. So, a smoke shop, selling smokeless things, isn't just a natural tie-in, that people would understand that terminology, if you understand what I'm saying. So, at that point, I think that not by design was it kept from the applicant, but by understanding as the process began to move forward, this isn't just a smoke shop, it's tobacco and tobacco-related in his definition, and the broader definition, then it ties them together, then the city realizes, wait a minute, no, here's what the code says. So, you know, I mean, that's an issue of needing to read the small print at that point.
Well, and if I could take a few moments, in business vernacular, smoke shop is the current way you refer to a tobacco shop, in fact, you have one right around the corner on Main Street, and it's.
But I wouldn't have inferred that it included those other things.
No, I understand, and the reason I reference it is, on the filing, is my client believes they were very transparent about what they were doing. I'm a land use attorney for 21 years, smoke shops in Orlando, Orange County, in fact, there are at least four in the city of Apopka's limits, and three of the four, Dahoot Smoke Shop up on Main Street, you have House of Smoke, you have APK Smoke Shop, and you have Apopka Vape. All of those stores, if you go to their Yelp reviews, or Facebook sites, or their websites, they're all referenced in their title as a smoke shop, because that's just the modern-day terminology for this type of retail facility. With respect to the code on Section 46-6, I would respectfully disagree, while it's saying that you can possess or consume, the term including e-cigarettes is referencing back to the term tobacco product. That's a term, tobacco product. That term then is used in other city regulations, is not defined differently in the land development code to say tobacco products, comma, not include, does not include e-cigarettes. So, I think it is relevant, because it goes to evidence that this governing body has within the terminology tobacco product, specifically called out and included an e-cigarette.
But again, that's possession and consuming, but not the sales.
But it's still referring back from a, from an interpretation standpoint, you look and you say, what does the term including e-cigarettes refer back to? When you read that sentence.
I'll refer to you, I'll ask you.
It's modifying the term tobacco product, as a matter of statutory interpretation, but even putting all that aside, as of October 1st, a local government's preemptive from regulating the sale of a tobacco product or a nicotine product. So, to the extent, Commissioner, you're referencing that an e-vape device is a nicotine device, well, by state statute, as of five days ago, not this entity, or entities I represent, can regulate the sale of those products. So, on that basis alone, we would ask that you modify and remove the condition. I mean, arguably, I guess my client has a argument that the condition's not enforceable as written, but we're here before you today as good business stewards in the city, following your process of filing an administrative appeal. And we think we've carried our burden of showing that the planning commission, as Commissioner Becker indicated, one, the motion wasn't to impose any conditions on our use, it was to say, you're approved for a tobacco shop. I'm standing before you today, saying your code of tobacco shop, your definition, includes tobacco and tobacco-related products, and that vaping and e-cigarettes fall within that line of products.
And that's where I would disagree. Again, I don't think there was any part on the, you know, for deception in any place there, but I do think there was a confusion of terms, and that part of our code is dealing with the sale, and it specifically says that those are excluded for a reason, for.
But respectfully, the code doesn't exclude vaping products anywhere in the code from a tobacco shop. There's no exclusion. In fact, the only reference to the term e-cigarette is in the park provision, that ties it back to a tobacco product.
Okay.
So, it's saying that an e-cigarette is a tobacco product, and then within the definition of a vape or hookah lounge, which, when you look at that definition of a vape or hookah lounge, it actually, it's not actually referring to what an actual e-cigarette is, it's saying that a vape hookah lounge is a location, an establishment primarily used for the social consumption of tobacco, tobacco-related, or tobacco-substitute products through any of these type of devices. That's not what we have here. We're not a, we're not a lounge, we're not a vape or hookah lounge, and that was the definition that was relied upon to say vaping and e-cigarettes aren't permitted at a tobacco shop. And there's just no, no language in your code that says that. In fact, the only evidence in your code would suggest otherwise, because, again, it precludes an e-cigarette as a tobacco product in a public park. So, again, I appreciate your patience and time, we thank you for your support of this. Again, we're an eager business to thrive within Apopka, and again, we think our argument is supported by the code, the conditions aren't supported by the planning commission's motion, and we're supported by state and federal law, and the new preemption that went into effect on October 1st. So, thank you.
Mr. Smith, you got any questions?
I'll wait for the response from my attorney.
Okay.
No, my questions are for our attorney.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Michael, when you come up, one of the things that'd be interesting, because I think, I'm not going to say they misled us, but I mean, I think there was some, you know, when they came to, you know, to get the special exception, that things that they were, you know, led to believe maybe weren't, you know, actually what was in the special exception. So, I know you were there, and can you kind of talk about how it was presented? Because obviously, special exception is just that, we don't have to, you know, you have to meet the criteria.
Correct.
And so, I mean, so now we put the two conditions on, well, if we were given all the information, could we go back and say, okay, let's turn it down as a special exception versus adding these two conditions?
Well, here's the entire crux of what's going on, and I think this is a case where things, you get, start lost in the weeds, and then you, when you look at it closely, I'm like, this really focuses on one issue. And I think for starters, I want to try to start this backwards, going on what the applicant has called condition two. Even if we as staff can say, okay, you know what, we'll strike condition two. Condition two is simply no onsite consumption, which basically states the obvious of what the special exception used for tobacco shop is under the code, which is just for the sale and not the onsite consumption. So, even if we strike condition two, he's still going to be in the same state, which is, you're there for the sale of tobacco and tobacco-related products, not for the onsite consumption, because elsewhere in the code, there are defines and specific separate uses for the onsite consumption. So, we could strike condition two, and he's still going to be in the same exact state, whether condition two is there or not. Then condition two is probably ends up being superfluous on the part of the planning commission to state, to stress that the special exceptions for the sale of tobacco, of the tobacco product, tobacco and tobacco-related products, and not the onsite consumption, because that differentiates a smoke shop or tobacco shop from a cigar bar, or even the vape hookah lounge. Also, don't want to get lost in the weeds and the confusion of what is meant by the definition of the vape and hookah lounge. Here's where the planning commission came to their rationale and where they were struggling. The application, I think, as it began to work its way through the process, was for a smoke shop. So, staff understood that to be basically tobacco shop and for tobacco products. It was then realized, prior to the council to commission meeting, that the applicant also intended to sell e-cigarettes and vape products and vape hardware. At that point, staff had a concern, saying, well, we don't want to have a vape shop. So, we look at the definition of tobacco shop under the land development code, which states tobacco and tobacco-related products. So, the planning commission then had to struggle with, well, where do vape, e-cigarettes, where do they fall? So, we go through the process and the exercise of legislative interpretation. We look at the definition, and we have a definition of tobacco, we have a term of tobacco, and we have a definition of tobacco-related products. So, they're asking, well, where do they fall in? I said, well, if the, it sounds funny when I talk about the land development code and the framers, but you go to the framer's intent to what, and you always do that in statutory interpretation, what is the intent? Well, when I look at the next definition for vape hookah lounge, I'm not going to focus on vape hookah lounge as a use, and I don't think, and then I think the applicant wants you to say, well, we're not looking at this as a use. We weren't looking at it, and this planning commission wasn't looking at it as a potential use. They zeroed in on one specific term inside the definition of a vape hookah lounge, and that was tobacco substitute products. So, the intent is, well, if the framers intended to include tobacco substitute products, which is where e-cigs and vapes would fall, they would have put it in the definition of tobacco shop, but it's not there. So, that was their rationalization is, well, if the intent was to also allow and rate, and allow these, this item to be sold in a tobacco shop, the framers of the land development code would have included that specific term in the definition of tobacco shop, but it's only included in the definition of vape hookah lounge, which also includes tobacco, tobacco-related, and tobacco substitute. So, there had to have been, so the planning commission basically inferred the intent of the framers to say, well, if they meant to include this use, they considered it for a vape and hookah lounge, but they excluded it from tobacco shop, therefore, the intent was to include this type of item from the definition of tobacco shop, and hence, its sale in a tobacco shop. So, that's the crux of this appeal, and that's what you really need to focus on, is what the, what basically the interpretory exercise that the planning commission did was, based on the language as written in the code, because tobacco substitute was specifically excluded from the definition of tobacco shop, they inferred that the framers' intent was, and as zoning codes or codes of exclusion, if it's not listed there, it is not a permitted use. The application met all of the other criteria for a special exception, and was granted, with the condition, which basically enumerated the exclusion of tobacco substitute products from the definition of tobacco shop. So, that's it, that's the entire crux of this argument. And you're to now determine, well, that is that competent substantial evidence that the planning commission relied upon to render their determination that this use was approved for the sale of tobacco and tobacco-related products. Now, because our code is more stringent in its definition, including tobacco substitute, there is no prohibition against the local government from having more restrictive regulatory requirements than the state or federal government. Secondly, this local government, in the city in this case, is not trying to reclassify tobacco, not reclassifying a vape as something that the federal government has not defined. This, the intent is to accept the definitions of both the state and federal government. I also call into question how far the applicant here is trying to stretch the notion of the preemption. The preemption that was adopted in 2021, and I go strictly to the language, it's the establishment of minimum age for the purchasing or possessing, and the regulation for the marketing sale or delivery of tobacco products is preempted to the state. I would, I would basically argue that when it comes to the regulation of sales, city of Apopka does not impose any additional licensing for tobacco retailers, does not regulate any other type of regulations. Basically, tobacco sellers, all they get is a BTR, and that's all. The, went through the legislative history and the bill analysis for, it was basically, it's in Chapter 2021 to 14, it's Senate Bill 1080, just for the record, to get the record straight, it is, it's Senate Bill 1080. The legislative history does not intend to, whether it stretches as far out as basically preempting local governments from regulating the location of where such tobacco products are sold. I don't believe it was the legislature's intent to allow smoke shops and tobacco shops to be put within, across the street from a school, or even in a school, or other types of uses. It's, it is basically what it takes for a retailer to sell, there's no local requirements or extra licensing for the sale of. Plus, the bill summary actually also states, under Chapter 386 Florida statutes, that local governments are allowed to impose even stricter regulations in regards to e-cigarettes and vaping than the state requirements. So, it's not a blanket preemption, because there's another section. Now, I wouldn't hold it past our legislators to not be aware that they probably preempted in one section and missed another section, and creating this conflict, since there is a mad rush for preemption, but then that's my personal opinion, and we probably agree with that. But, the notion of a blanket preemption on basically any type of requirement or regulation on the part of a local government on the sale of tobacco, and that would include the zoning, any zoning requirements for where such uses can be sold, do not believe that the, that is the legislative intent, the preemption doesn't go that far, and nothing in the bill history seems to suggest that it was also, that the state was stepping in to regulate, to basically preempt local zoning authorities from where tobacco sales can be, can be placed within local government's jurisdiction. But again, we fall back to, this is the main issue, is, and then to answer Commissioner Becker, your question, again, if I go buy cigarettes at, actually, I don't even know if Walgreens or CBS sells cigarettes, but I'm in a regular retailer that sells cigarettes, no, I cannot then open it up and smoke on the site, I would then be governed by the state regulations, the Clean Air, the indoor, indoor Clean Air Act, or the Indoor Air Act, which would prohibit me from then being able to smoke indoors. The only exception to the Indoor Smoking Act is if you are a bar, and I believe it's, off the top of my head, I can't remember if it was between 15 and 30% of your revenue does not generate from the sale of food, you can't smoke, hence why you can smoke inside of a bar, but you can't smoke inside of a restaurant, because it's tied to the percentage of your revenues, and that's something that's, that is preempted to the state. The city of Apopka can't come in and say, okay, if the state says you have to derive no more than 20% of your revenue for food, we're going to come in and say, no, no, you can't derive more than 5% of your revenue for food. No, that is an area of smoking regulations that is preempted to the state. But the notion that the state has also preempted the ability of the city to zone such specific tobacco shops, I don't think the intent, and nothing in the legislative history seems to suggest that the state has preempted even the local government's zoning authority over the placement of tobacco shops. If they did, if they would have done so, they would have done so and expressly provided that, similar to how they did with medical marijuana dispensaries, where there is a preemption, but there was other specific language as to where local governments, you know, certain aspects of local government control were not preempted. So, the main position, and staff's position, is that this was an exercise of legislative interpretation, and the planning commission went to the code to justify where the definition line, where this use fell through. And because our code, so the, I guess to counter, what the applicant is asking you to do is, well, your code states that e-cigarettes are prohibited as a use in parks, but at the same time, he's asking you to ignore the fact that within the land development code itself, in the same section where tobacco shop is defined, to ignore the fact that there is a specific definite, there's a specific term of tobacco substitute, which is included in one use, but excluded in another. Yet, he needs you to, the exercise that the applicant is trying to do is, is don't pay attention to this, pay attention to this argument over here, where you've made such a analogy, but there is a explicit exception or explicit distinction in the land development code itself between tobacco, tobacco products, tobacco-related products. tobacco-related products and tobacco substitute products. And that's where the planning commission honed in on their decision, which was, well, the code is telling me it's tobacco substitute and it's in this section. So if it's not here, then there's never an intent to include that within the definition of tobacco shop, which is the defined term under our land development code for this use. Don't need to go through the term of art and the business term of smoke shop, no. In the city of Apopka, the use that they propose is defined as a tobacco shop. So the planning commission considered that use under the land development code, applied the, the conditions and the criteria for special exception, granted the special exception, and the conditions further just, further enumerated the restrictions within the actual definition of the use, which is a conditional use, that excluded tobacco substitute products. And that's where, and that's where we are and that's why we're here today.
But within our code, do we ever technically define tobacco-related tobacco substitutes? Or you're just supposed to glean that from the language in another definition? And the reason why I ask that too is, I think to Mr. Spain's point, you know, this, this idea that this word kratom comes up there and it's not specifically defined in the hookah vape section where it talks about substitutes. So whose interpretation was that and how did that get on the prohibition of substitute?
The question that, that would, that would entail, because it falls, it would probably kratom would probably fall under tobacco substitute.
Probably, but according to who?
It's not, I've got to go to the defined terms and what kratom is and because if our code is, our code, our land development code states, if it's not defined in here, you end up falling with the common definition of the term. So if I go by tobacco substitute product, I'm assuming a product that is going to use another item that is a substitute for a tobacco-based, basically something derived from the tobacco leaf.
But, but in our land development code, is there mention of kratom specifically?
No.
Okay, that's the point that I'm making.
Right.
So even there, whoever wrote this or whoever made the determination of kratom, because I, and honestly, I don't remember from the testimony of being spoken. So somehow it's come up in the definition of substitutes and we're saying that's not defined in our code.
Right. The question then becomes, does kratom fall within? Because if I got to use the defined terms for a tobacco shop, does kratom logically fall within tobacco product or tobacco-related product? And now we're, now we're within there.
So here, here's how I get to the decision that's ultimately before us. So the planning commission made a motion to approve the special exception for tobacco shop. That's, I don't, again, this is me talking, but I don't think that's disputed at this point. There's, you know, evidence to support that. I think we all, five of us up here probably have different interpretations of what our personal views is on tobacco shops and that's regardless. We can't apply that here. We're here to appeal a decision of the planning commission. So the planning commission approved that as a special exception. It's just, the real question at hand here is whether or not they meant and they interpreted their definition of tobacco shop to explicitly exclude this idea of tobacco substitutes. Because we, and legally speaking, is just because tobacco substitute was written in one definition in the land development code imply that it, it's missing or not presence in another definition would imply that that's intended for that, that tobacco shop. Because, because again, tobacco substitutes is not formally defined in our land development code.
Right. But it's not implied. Because a zoning code is a code of exclusion, it is not included in the definition of tobacco shop. Therefore, it's not an implication that it's, that it doesn't fall in, it's not there. Therefore, it's not permitted.
Yeah. So I go back to a line of dialogue that happened during this contemplation at the planning commission. And one of the members did, because they were, they were stuck on the tobacco-related definition. And I think it was talking about some of the vape or e-cigarette conversation and it was steeped in the idea of, well, are those vape or e-cigarette products nicotine-based? And I think the answer was in the affirmative based off of the applicant. And that led to some conversation to say, okay, well, then it just becomes an interpretation issue. And this leads me to the point that I first made is, I never heard explicit statements from the commission to do this tobacco substitute or conversation around that when they made the formal motion. So I, you know, I would be really curious to know if that was the intent.
Can't go into the intent. I mean, I'm down to what is on the, what's the record before, that occurred below that's presented before you and that was the decision. Now, this, the council, you do have the authority under the code to remand the matter back to the planning commission with specific instructions for them to review. That is, that is a power you do have under the land development code to consider. Because this appeal is based on the record, you are not to substitute your judgment, you're not to substitute your judgment for that of the planning commission. You are to evaluate what they considered and the basis for that consideration and then rule on whether that basis was based on competent substantial evidence. And as I've raised before, the evidence that was before the planning commission is they looked at the code holistically and saw that there is, the terms in both tobacco shop and vape hookah lounge use the same terms except for one, and that was tobacco substitute products. So their conclusion was, based on the drafting and their framers intent was, if it's excluded, it was, if, if it was meant to be a use, an item permitted to be sold in tobacco shops, it would have been listed. Why did they list it here and not list it there? And since zoning codes are codes of exclusion, because it's not listed in tobacco shop, their conclusion is that these products, and they went back and forth and they deliberated and their conclusion, their conclusion was, a vape or e-cig constituted a tobacco substitute product, not a tobacco-related product and hence was not a permitted, not permitted to be sold under, in tobacco shop as a special exception under the code.
So when they made their decision at the planning and zoning board, did they specify that to the applicant?
Yes, it was, that was, that's condition one, that e-cigs, vapes, I believe that, that was, that's not a, that's the condition, those are not permitted to be sold.
Just out of curiosity, when he first came into the city to request, to say, I'm, I'm going to open up a business and this is my business, did he mention what his smoke shop was going to be like? Or did he just use the generic, I'm opening up a smoke shop? Was there any discussion?
I believe staffs presented at the planning commission that the initial was just smoke shop and that there was no discussions as to the particulars and that, that what it was then, I believe then it was brought up subsequently that, oh, I also intend to sell vape products, e-cigarette products and hardware. So basically the,
So what?
Whatever the liquids are that you actually use to form the vapor as well as the, I don't want to call it paraphernalia because that is such a negative connotation, but the hardware used for it.
Okay, so he presented that and did it go to DRC or does it, or it went directly to PNC? How does, how does that work with the?
No, it goes, the special exception goes right to the planning commission.
Oh, it does.
Right. Now, just as, as if you take the rationale that the applicant is trying to stretch out the use of tobacco substitute, tobacco-related or even to stretch it out for, I mean, its logical conclusion is another applicant can come in and try to attempt to sell, well, actually no, strike that. I think I'm going a little too far in my assumptions to go farther that, but.
So I want to just, you know, kind of just be sort of neutral in this. We do have smoke shops and they're defined as smoke shops, the small businesses here. And we do have one that actually says vape shop. When they came in for business, I mean, did we apply the same restrictions to them? What happened?
Previous code.
Okay, so that's this, okay, so that's, okay, so that's the whole, because I'm like saying, why the other shops are existing and this one isn't? So it's a change of code that is occurring with this.
To my knowledge.
Did we notify this applicant that that was a change of code?
We already got it. That's the only code he would have known.
That would have been the only code he would have known when he came in.
Right. If you're, if you're coming in for any type of development application now, the city has no obligation to advise an applicant. Oh, and by the way, two years ago, we're almost coming on, three years ago, we adopted this new land development code, the prior code since repealed. With the adoption, the new land development code has no effect. Now, those uses that were, that were approved, subject to that code and hence continue, become non-conforming uses. And as long as they remain as legal non-conformities and don't fall as, under the standards for a legal non-conformity that hence need to be amortized to no longer be allowed to be used, they may remain as a non-conforming, you know, grandfathered use.
So I'm, I'm kind of getting the general, because I, you know, I don't smoke, so I don't understand vape and all that. But I'm kind of getting that he came in, went through the whole process and then when he got to the planning, where was it, at what point did he say, oh, and by the way, I want to include vape, e-cigarettes and whatever?
My understanding was just prior to the planning commission.
Okay.
So it was clarified, I think staff may have, staff may have raised the issue under, do you intend to sell these products too? And I think at that point, because the actual application for the special exception, which is in your records, he did submit it, just simply says smoke shop. It does not enumerate the items that are going to be sold. So the, we, going forward on the language in the actual application, it was silent. So when staff raised the concern, are you going to also include these items? And the applicant said, well, yes. That's when it said, well, at this point, that may be an issue and it will be presented to the planning commission and that's what the planning commission considered, hence their decision, hence why we're here today.
Okay, so at that opportunity, when they, when staff realized that he was going to include this, was there an opportunity for, before going to planning and zoning, for staff to reconsider? Or was it just a strictly they were following the code?
There was as much of an opportunity for the applicant to withdraw his application and go back and work with staff. I mean, it, it's a road that goes both ways.
So he had an, the applicant had an opportunity to say, withdraw my staff, my application from planning and zoning, let's sit down with staff.
Any applicant has the ability to withdraw their application right up until right before you make, you make a vote.
So by getting to us at this stage is, who do they want to bypass? The code, the staff findings, the planning and zoning? So I'm kind of confused right there.
What they want, they want you as the city council, which sits as the appellate board, as the appellate tribunal per se to the planning commission, to state that, they're requesting that you render a decision stating that the planning commission's decision that e-cigarettes and vape products was not a tobacco or tobacco-related product is erroneous and not supported by competent substantial evidence. Staff's position is that the decision of the planning commission in deciding that e-cigarettes, vape constitutes tobacco substitute products, which are not, do not fall as a item listed in tobacco shop use definition and therefore not permitted to be sold under the code as a special exception and that that decision should stand based on the evidence that the planning commission examined, their analysis, their review of the code and the definitions within the code. All of that is their, their decision to grant the special. Let's remember that they, that the business, this business can right now be operating and selling all the products that they're permitted to sell under the code except for vape products, vape oils, e-cigarettes, the actual hardware. There is nothing currently right now, there has been no action on the part of the city to prohibit them from opening and going up for business. They got their BTR, they have their special exception approval, they can start business now. There's nothing stopping them from doing that. They are just prohibited from selling a specific item because it doesn't fall under the definition in the land development code.
So, so, so the, the planning commission obviously didn't have the benefit of the testimony today, correct? So there's.
There, I haven't made any separate new arguments that I didn't raise before the planning commission.
What I'm saying is that the, the applicant or the appellant is making points today that were not made during the planning commission.
No, they, there was, they raised arguments before the planning commission as well.
Let me, let me, let me use an example, because it goes to compelling evidence that at least from where I sit, seems compelling. So the, the area in our land development code where it talks about the park space consumption or whatever the case might be, but not so much how it's disposition, either use or sales, but the classification that it's listed underneath a section where it talks about tobacco products, that's one piece. This, let me finish. The second piece is, Mr. Spain made a comment during his presentation talking about the generally accepted state definition of what tobacco-related products are to be inclusive of like e-cigarettes or vaping type of materials. That's, it's, it's evidence and neither of those were presented to the planning commission in that manner. So I keep on getting to the space where, first of all, I don't agree with some of the language on here because I know that it was never discussed during the planning commission, like kratom, I'm just going to use as an example. It's nowhere, anywhere within our land development code. So my, my instinct is to remand back to the planning commission to say, we're struggling here at this appeal process because we're trying to get inside your head about what you felt tobacco-related products truly were when you rendered their decision. Because again, they did not in their motion say specifically, and I get what you're saying, it's, you know, by not having in that one definition line and it's present elsewhere in another definition, that implies that it's not inclusive, but I didn't get that from the testimony that I heard. And so is it possible, part of proper process for us to give those two points of evidence and others, if the rest of the commission wants to do that, back to the planning commission to say, what was your true intent around? And did you specifically want this first exclusion listed in the final outcome?
You do have the authority to go on the two points. As to the first point of their argument as to its use of the term in the parks section of the code as opposed to in the land development code, that was not raised. I would position that that is new evidence, which is to be disregarded by this council because you are only supposed to decide that which was before the, before the planning council, planning commission and on the record below. As to your second point, again, as I stated earlier, the city council does have the authority under the land development code to remand the matter back to the planning commission with specific instructions, just like an appellate court has the authority to send something back down to the trial court with the specific instructions to state, planning commission. Please examine the, render a determination as to whether, and come up with a determination as to what, whether these items are tobacco-related products. And basically, whether they're tobacco-related products. Because if they're not, they're not within the code and they're excluded. I, I don't think this council has the authority to go back and state, do they fall under something else? Because I got to go to the language of the code, which defines under tobacco shop, tobacco and tobacco-related. So the question then becomes, are these items tobacco-related products or not? And then it is going to be up to the applicant and staff to present to the planning commission the evidence and then the planning commission has to decide in that matter. At this point, what the planning commission did decide was, they felt that the items that were, that were intended, the applicant wanted to sell, did not fall within the definition of tobacco or tobacco-related. Therefore, because they're not in there, they would not be permitted. That they fell more along the definition of tobacco substitute. And because the word appears in a similar use in the land development code, right in the same section, their conclusion is, if this was intended to be a product to be sold in tobacco shop, the authors of the land development code would have included it as such. Mr. Smith?
Listening to the evidence, the only recommendation I would have is to remove condition two. Otherwise, I'm in favor of the commission's report.
You know, I mean, I'm, on behalf of staff, I'm willing to withdraw, to remove condition two because it said condition two is superfluous. It's really moot. Because your use is the use. It's condition two seems to be like, oh, and by the way, you're approved for a tobacco shop and by the way, you're only approved for a tobacco shop. That's what in essence, condition two is. I mean, I don't have an objection with, with removing condition two and moving forward. I mean, staff, we would just remove condition two from the special exception.
Yeah, you stated it far more eloquently, but that was the point I was trying to get to and the substitute and the intent of that. Why would we have changed the code if there wasn't a necessity for them to say? for them to say, we're not liking what we're seeing. We want to limit this in our community, and that was...
It was raised before the planning commission, that was raised to the applicant and raised to the planning commission. If it's a question of the scope of the code, there was nothing to stop the applicant from petitioning the city council to consider amending the land development code to include these uses within the defined term. And that was presented. They were told, you have every right to petition the city council to amend the code to include this use within the definition of tobacco shop.
And Mayor, if I may, for the record, I won't take long, but I'm compelled, for record purposes, just to respond to a couple...
I'm sorry, can you just speak a little louder? I struggle to hear.
Yeah, I have a raspy voice.
I know. That's okay, just speak, like you see the difference?
Oh, no, I do, but this is my second day of hour-long hearings. I was in Lake County yesterday. But the city attorney mentioned this theme of the framers' intent. You have to go to the framers' intent. All law students, myself included, we all learn about statutory interpretation, code interpretation. Let's look at the framers' intent. And respectfully, they're up here telling you, a vape product is a tobacco substitute. Tobacco substitutes mentioned in vape hookah lounge, and it's not in the definition of a tobacco or tobacco shop, which references tobacco products and tobacco-related products. What's left out of that, but Commissioner Becker touched upon it, is tobacco substitutes is not defined anywhere in your land development code. Nowhere in your code does it say, an e-cigarette is a tobacco substitute. So when the implication is that my clients up here are trying to ask you to make leaps and jump through multiple hoops, I would submit that is just flat-out incorrect. The jump through the hoop is to say, the planning commission said, well, it says tobacco substitute here for a vape hookah lounge. It doesn't say for tobacco shop, and we're going to ad hoc, on the fly, say, an e-cigarette and vape products are tobacco substitute products, when that term is nowhere defined in your code. So then when you go to the framers' intent, and I quoted the city attorney, we have to go to the defined terms. Well, you can't go to tobacco substitutes. It is not defined in your code. But what you can go to is, your code does actually have a reference to the term tobacco product, which is the terminology used in the definition of a tobacco shop. And when you go to that reference of tobacco product, it says, including e-cigarettes. So if you go to the framers' intent, the framers' intent, the only indication of framers' intent is that the term tobacco product, which it's undisputed between both parties, that tobacco product is allowed to be sold at a tobacco shop. The only specific reference in the code says tobacco product, including e-cigarettes. And to sit and suggest that if I use a vape, it's a tobacco product, but if I sell a vape, it's not a tobacco product, I would submit is not supported by the language in your code. So to the extent you have to go to the framers' intent, the only indication anywhere in a published, adopted document is that tobacco product includes e-cigarettes. There's nothing else. There is no definition of tobacco substitutes. Respectfully, the planning commission cannot, on the whim, apply an unadopted standard to a pending application. In fact, it's the opposite. If the city wants tobacco substitutes to include e-cigarettes and vape, the city can amend its code to call that out. But as my client applied to the city, and it got reclassified to a tobacco shop, because that's the only thing called out in your table. It'd be a smoke shop, if that's what was called out on the table. But the only reference, again, you look at your code, it says, no use or consumption or whatever of tobacco product, including e-cigarettes. I mean, I don't think it could be clearer. If you guys want to clarify it down the line and say, hey, we think an e-cigarette is a tobacco substitute, you all have the legislative authority to do that, but that's not in your code right now, and the city attorney is suggesting it is, and it isn't. That's undefined. And on the smoke shops and the suggestion that they were all pre-code, your old code actually did reference tobacco shops. You all updated, sort of re-codified it, but it's my understanding, the House of Smoke, which is down on South OBT, on 1714 South OBT, it's by the Starbucks, that has a "now open" sign right in front of it. It just opened within the past four months. So I haven't done a public records request on that, but I'm not sure how that, which is called House of Smoke, and they have big, I took a picture of it driving out here today, vape, vape products, all that right on their window signage, is somehow different than what my client is proposing. But again, I agree with the city attorney. This does come down to the language and the framers' intent, and the only indication anywhere in your adopted document is that tobacco product includes an e-cigarette.
And yet I just Googled tobacco substitutes, and it begins to list these very products as a substitute.
Understood, Commissioner, that could be, but that is not in your adopted code. Your role as a quasi-judicial officer is to apply your code. And the city attorney may say, well, you look to a dictionary definition. I looked at the planners' reference definition of a tobacco specialty store, and it says, "a store that sells tobacco and related goods." I think if you asked a layperson walking down the street if an e-cigarette or a vape product is a related good to tobacco, you would get an affirmative man-on-the-street or woman-on-the-street answer of, yes. I can go into a 7-Eleven in this city's jurisdiction and buy an e-cigarette, where they sell cigarettes. And again, the city has acknowledged the reason for it, which again, the motion doesn't impose any of these conditions. But their argument hinges on the use of tobacco substitute in the vape hookah lounge definition.
Then why would we have needed to change the code?
I don't know why you put that in there. I think it was probably an oversight that someone put tobacco, tobacco-related, and tobacco substitute, probably because of these other items, like kratom and the like, or whatever's coming down the pipeline. I mean, a few years ago, there was something else that a bunch of teenagers were smoking. But again, I steer back to your own code, and it says tobacco product, including e-cigarettes. So I don't have to guess. It's not surmise or speculation that e-cigarette is a tobacco substitute, which that's what the planning commission and the staff is doing. Your code already, whether you like it or not, and maybe you all need to amend your code. So in parks, you say, no smoking of tobacco products or tobacco substitutes, including e-cigarettes. But that's not how it's written. It's written to tie e-cigarettes to tobacco products. So again, we respectfully ask that you modify the approval and strike condition one. Condition two, there's a stipulation. I mean, it's just, that's our point, is it's not necessary, because we're not a lounge.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to state two items before you render your decision. One was the inference that applicant just made that the planning commission willy-nilly pulled out a standard out of thin air, which is not true. The standards that were considered for a special exception are enumerated by the code, each one was considered. The argument he's trying to raise is the issue of whether the definition that falls outside of those standards. When it comes to a special exception, they have to be completely objective standards, and the planning commission considered, and the record and the report of the planning commission considers each of the objective standards enumerated in the land development code when it comes to a special exception. It's the interpretation of the definition that's at issue. And how they came up with that interpretation is based on, is where we're arguing now. But to state that that was basically willy-nilly, ad hoc, come up with as a standard for a special exception, is not the case. Secondly, the land development code explicitly states in Section 10.1.11 that a term not defined in the code, "such interpreted meaning shall be based upon the definition..." If a term used in this land development code is not defined in this land development code, "the director is authorized to interpret its meaning in accordance with Section 2.5.6 interpretation. Such interpreted meaning shall be based upon the definitions used in accepted sources, including, but not limited to, a planner's dictionary, a glossary of zoning development and planning terms, and a survey of zoning definitions, all published by the American Planning Association, as well as general dictionaries, such as Merriam-Webster, American Heritage, Webster's New World, and New Oxford American Dictionaries." And that's where the planning commission was at. We were struggling with a term that's not defined, that was referenced in one section but not referenced in the other, and they went out and tried to find what would be the generally-accepted term. That was their rationale, that was their decision that was done in this council chambers, and they came to. So then the issue comes down to that decision on the planning commission. Was it based on competent substantial evidence or not? And that's what you, as a council, are to consider today.
Okay. All right. What are the point? I know, so I think Commissioner Smith kind of laid out a motion, and so I just want to make sure we've got it in the right posture. So, Michael, could you help him with how he needs to state that for the record?
Well, as stated in the staff report, you have four options when it comes to your recommended action. The first one is to affirm the decision or interpretation being appealed in whole or in part, or modify the decision or interpretation being appealed in whole or in part, reverse the decision or interpretation being appealed in whole or in part, or remand the matter back to the planning commission with direction for further action. So if you intend, I think probably the easiest thing is, I think we have a stipulation between staff and the applicant that we will, condition two will be removed, because it's just superfluous. So at this point then, because we have a stipulation between the two parties that condition two is no longer at issue, what you've got is an appeal of condition one to a granted special exception. So that's what, so your decision is either to affirm the decision of the planning commission, granting the special exception with a condition, or it would fall under modifying, which would be, you will grant the special exception, but modify the condition to read as follows, or reverse, which a reversal would mean that you would actually deny the special exception. And I don't think the applicant is looking for reversal. I think what we're probably boiling down to, and I think we probably, I can stipulate with the applicant, we're down to either affirming or modifying, or remanding the decision. I think, I don't think reversal is probably a, you can, if you want to reverse the decision, but that's where we fall.
So Commissioner Smith's looking to, I guess, to modify?
Well, no. Since they agreed on condition two, then my motion would simply be to affirm the decision over the planning commission.
Correct. Condition two is off the table.
I second that.
This matter's illegal, it's a matter of law. I don't, this isn't a public hearing.
But again, we're, in rendering this decision, we're saying that if we affirm this, we are affirming that the planning, we feel the planning commission, in their proceedings, they use the word kratom. Like, I'm splitting hairs here, but I'm splitting hairs for a reason. Because, does the evidence show from the planning commission that they use that word?
If I may, just for a point of order.
If it wasn't presented...
For the record, I just wanted to indicate there was an individual who wanted to speak, and it's my understanding that the notice that the city actually provided to us says that it's a notice of public hearing, and I believe it's in your packet. I thought it had language in there that interested members of the public could attend and speak. So I just want to preserve that on the record in case, and I'll look for the notice. I believe it's in the packet I handed out.
Which one is it?
It's Exhibit 20, I believe, so if I can find it. And it does, it's Exhibit 28, page 10. It looks like it says, "A notice is given that the city council will hold a public hearing to consider the appeal." And then it says, "affected parties and the public may appear at the above-listed hearing to speak."
My position would be, any evidence that such a person would present, if not presented before the planning commission, was not to be considered by this council, since the appeal is limited to and restricted to the record before the planning commission.
Did a public notice go out saying that?
There was a public notice, this is a public meeting. It's a public hearing. The argument is, because we're not rehearing the case, and we're not rehearing the special exception.
So then we allow for public?
The public can appear. This isn't a secret meeting. It's not a, this is a public, I mean, there's questions as to whether, you know, there's always public meeting and public hearing, and to input, any input from the public. However, the decision of this board is limited to the record before, the record below. So a member of the public can come and speak. I would have to advise you to disregard any testimony that was not presented before the planning commission legally as an appellate body. That is evidence that was not before the planning commission.
All right. So we're back to, Commissioner Smith had a...
So, okay.
Motion to...
Do we allow him to speak and just let him know that it will not be considered?
You can allow, but your decision cannot be based on that evidence, if that evidence is extranveraneous.
So, because it's a public hearing, and I think he has a right, if we have one public hearing, I would let him speak, but he would have to know, and you've already said it, that we cannot consider what he says.
Correct. Because the notice says as such, I will then subsequently review notices, but because this is an appellate matter, that testimony should be limited to the parties, because this is, the board is here sitting as a quasi-judicial board. So he can free to speak, but I'm...
I would say, in the future, if we, because this is the first time I'm actually sitting like an appellate court, which is interesting right now for me. But because of the public notice that went out, gave the public speaker the impression that he can come and say something.
Correct.
So I would want to hear what he has to say, but at the same time, to know, just as we sit in a jury in a court, when we let people kind of say what they have to say, and the judge turns around and says, okay, that, you know, we're not going to consider that.
We can proceed. The city's objection has been noted for the record.
So I want to be able to let him speak. Okay. So we have one public, did he do a... So when you finish, just one of those green...
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and address the city today. My family owns that property right across the street, and I'm an interested party today, and we own 60 East Fifth Street. My family's been here.
We need to name the address for the record.
60 East Fifth Street in Apopka, Florida, across the street.
Your name?
Young Kim. By the way, I'm also attorney, I do criminal defense, and will stress and probate, so, but I'm not in any representative capacity that Chris Segarian. May I address the city now?
Yeah, four minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the city today, and no way will my opinion be prejudiced by the outcome of the city, and I respect what the city does at the end of the day. And that's why I wanted to first start off with that note. And I'm here today because I believe in Chris. He has spent so much money in the city, and a ton of money. And it would be a shame that he cannot conduct his business as a businessperson, because I myself is an entrepreneur myself. My family comes from owning convenience stores to restaurants, and this is the American dream, to not put limitations on businesses. And Chris has a family to feed, and it would be a shame that Chris would not be able to conduct this business as a businessperson. My family has been in this community for maybe 30 years or so. My mother is running, my family has operated that little rinky-dink furniture shop for 20 years now. And I consider myself a part of this community, and I'm very proud to be in Apopka, and I also went to Apopka High School. And so, I just want to say today, that plaza used to be not so pretty. And so I just want to say today, that plaza used to be not so pretty, and we cleaned it up. We have a brewery now. We also have a coffee shop, and possibly Chris conducting his business as a smoke shop. And all I want the city to note is that he just be treated equitably and fairly, because he's like every American entrepreneur today. Let Chris run his business, feed his family, and please do not put any limitations on him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Back to the, I think Commissioner Smith was trying to get to a point, if you want to make that motion again, I think we're...
He made, I second it.
My, my motion is to affirm the decision of the Planning Commission with condition one.
Okay. And I second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second...
I had an outstanding question to our attorney regarding one of the pieces in the stipulation.
The issue is because we already have a motion, that is the motion that's before the table. If the motion maker wishes to amend his motion to include your request to add to the motion, then that would be up to the motion maker.
I'm not wishing to amend the motion. I had an outstanding question before the motion was presented around the use of the word kratom when they rendered their decision.
Kratom was something that was raised by staff based on the definition of tobacco substitute products, and because the commission ruled that these, that tobacco substitute products would not be permitted, staff added that kratom as a tobacco substitute product, not a tobacco-related product.
Okay, so that was all staff interpretation?
Staff extended the interpretation to include kratom as a tobacco substitute product, not a tobacco-related product.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm, I actually feel a little bit kind of torn in either reaffirming, or, I mean, I'm okay with the condition two, but I feel like we're splitting hairs with condition one. I really just can't get a clarity of the interpretation from the Planning and Zoning Board. So, you know, I would like to have remanded, just to get some real clarity. They understand?
Understood, but we have a motion and a second, so that's the item that's currently under consideration. Unless you wish to request the motion maker to amend his motion, but that's the motion on the table.
No, I don't. I mean, we've had, we've split the hairs on this already.
So is that a yes or a no?
I'm going to say no.
Okay, so we got...
No.
So three yeses and two no's. So it's Commissioner Smith, Banksen, Nelson, and the affirmative, Velazquez, and Becker in the proposition. Now to city council reports. Commissioner Velazquez?
Wow, did I have a lot of, I had some good things, so let me end on a good note. I actually wrote them all down. And that was, we're still recognizing the Hispanic month. So I, you know, I did speak to Edward. I know we have notable of those of Hispanic culture that we could recognize and at least give them some kind of recognition for this month. We also have employees that have worked really hard and have made such positive contributions to our city, so I'd like to recognize them at some point.
Proclamation will be next commission meeting.
Absolutely. I'd appreciate that.
It's already, it's already on the board.
Right. So, of course, I attended the Apopka Amphitheater for the festivals that we had out there. On Saturday, the 18th, we had the Latin Jazz Concert, which was excellent. We had the Joni B concert, and just this past Saturday, we had the Fruit Truck Awards. So again, I want to thank our staff. It's, all the festivals were so well-attended, and actually, a lot of the visitors and residents would like to see that continue. I want to kind of announce that we were supposed to have the Miss Apopka Scholarship Competition scheduled for October 16th. It has been postponed. There was other reasons behind it. It was just easier to postpone it and reschedule it for Saturday, February 12th, and that was a date that was confirmed with the Apopka High School. So we'll be, you know, talking more about that. Yesterday, I attended the swearing-in of two Apopka Police Officers, new, so I want to welcome again Police Officer Andrew Muniz and Police Officer Daniel Mejia. The other thing, we attended last night the Emerson Community Night Out. It was fantastic. I love seeing the communities come out, and I want to give a special thank you to the Apopka Police Department and the Fire Department, but especially the Police Department, they built that entire obstacle course, and I had a lot of fun watching the young people go through it. They really made us feel bad that we should be able to go through them. What else? Special thanks to Ed Bass, because I came to you with a concern for an elderly couple that had reached out to me over two weeks ago regarding their tree that's on the right away of the city, and it had really raised a lot of their sidewalk, and they had a family that came and tripped. And although the two requests they made was to take the tree down, and we had an arborist go out and determine that the tree was healthy, and they didn't recommend to take the tree down, but you immediately went out and fixed the sidewalk. And in doing so, I know that Varick had gone out and made an observation of the community and have made some notes that there are plenty of other raised sidewalks, something we are going to address, but I really appreciate that you did this for this one particular elderly senior couple. I shouldn't call them elderly, but a senior couple. So on their behalf, I want to say thank you to you. And that was it. And that was it. So I thank you.
Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah, I just got back into town late last night, and so I missed a lot of those wonderful events, but just exciting that we would celebrate our community together.
Commissioner Smith?
I'd just like to acknowledge that this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so anything that you can do to support any endeavors that are taking place to help to assist couples or families that are going through breast cancer at this time, or to help get rid of that disease would be much appreciated. And our prayers go out, the dean from Wheaton Elementary passed on Sunday from breast cancer.
Who was that?
So, the dean from Apopka, from Phillips Wheaton Elementary.
I'm sorry to hear that.
So our prayers go out to that family. Also, it's Domestic Violence Month, and last of all, it's Passes Appreciation Month as well. So we just wanted to get that out there. Also want to again say to this council that we want to look aggressively at affordable housing for the city of Apopka, or workforce housing, whichever term we want to use, and then lastly, that we need to also start looking seriously at annexation of South Apopka.
Commissioner Becker?
No, no, we've got some more items on the agenda, so in the interest of time, I'll yield.
Okay, all right. Edward?
It's been a long day, so I will try to make mine short. I have several points I wanted to point out, but I'll try to make mine short. You have before you the financial report for the sales taxes, this is the final month, so you have a full 12 months now, a full picture for our fiscal year ending 2021. Two things I want to point out, a couple of things I want to point out on this report. If you look at FY 2020 and FY 2021, the revenues are almost, they almost mirror each other. So 9.6, 9, right at 9.6 million is what we received for the last two years. So you can see that. Also, I want to call, if you look to the, on the right of this report, you'll see that the variance overall is about $359,000. So as you can see, that we will be, we will fall $356,000 short in this revenue line for this fiscal year that we're closing, the 2021. Another point I want to mention that I think is good data, and I will continue this as we move forward each month, but I think it's important to know, we went back and looked at FY 19, 2019, just to kind of see where we are before COVID hit and where we are today. And we were about 1, we're 1.5 short, or 1.5 less than we were in FY 19. So we were about 11.2 million in FY 19, and you can see that since we've had the last two years, we're coming in at 9.6. So I think that's some good information there. Couple other things I would like to talk about real quick is Fire Station 4. If you recall, at the last meeting, there was some talk about some mold issue or whatever at Fire Station 4. I want to report that we jumped on that right away as soon as I knew from that meeting, jumped on that. We had an analysis done, we have a report that came back. The report came back, very, very good report. It wasn't that much on the report, other than air conditioner, AC, filters, cleaning, vent cleanings that they wanted done. And it's my understanding that that has been taken care of this week. So I talked to the facilities guy, and they said they're working on that. So we will, again, we'll monitor it and check those issues, but I wanted to tell you that we jumped on that right away, since that's a, you know, a critical issue about the safety of our employees. So we did that.
Are you doing the other stations too, or?
We have not, Commissioner, but there is funding in our budget going forward, so we did do the annex, the city hall annex, because they had an issue a little bit over there, and that one came back very clean. There was nothing, that was a chair mat that somebody had on their desk. But that is something we can look at going forward to monitor that. We'll have facilities make sure that they monitor, and if we have issues or whatever, we can, we can do those as well, so. But that, I did want to report that one at least, so, because, you know, when an employee gives us a concern or fills out an issue based on facilities, facilities department jumps on those right away, so. The other thing, and I'll hold the city council meeting for October 13th, I think what we needed on that item, I have it on my report, because I think that we probably want to kind of at least get a consensus of the city council, I think publicly, to note that we're going to move that meeting to next Wednesday, even though I think we're all on the same page. But a couple other things I want to do first is the special assessments. Commissioner Velazquez, you had talked about, we talked about in our meetings when we do these special assessments, that putting them online, they're online now. So if you go to the finance tab, you'll be able to actually see all the special assessments that we levy, and each one of them will be on there, and we'll continue, the ones you approve tonight, as they get approved, those will go on there so the public can actually see what the levy is, how it's calculated, and they'll have all the information. And then the final thing that I wanted to, that I'm very, very proud to say today, and I have to give, you know, kudos to the IT department. The, as you, this is the first council meeting we've had, and if you go online, instead of, when you go into the agenda to look at the agendas that are online, the public now will have the staff reports as well. They are ADA compliant now. Rob and his group have worked on that, and they're ADA compliant. They will not have the backup, all of the backup, but they'll have the staff report. So the public can go on now, they can look at the agenda, and they can click each staff report under each item that they're interested in, and actually see all the staff report. And in the staff report, it does show there are attachments. So if the public would like to have those attachments, the city clerk more than happy to give you those attachments, if there's certain attachments that they would like to see as well. So I think that's a step in the right direction, and finally being able to get those reports, at least the staff reports out there, so the public has those as well.
Okay.
And with that, I think that's all I have.
Well, just, I mean, one of the things I know, we, there was some concern about, you know, we've, one of the things we prided ourselves in is getting out the agendas on Friday afternoon. That was one of the things I came in, I said, I wanted everybody to be able to see things. And this one week, we just couldn't, something, something was quirky on one of the agenda items, just couldn't get it done until, I know Edward and Tammy stayed up till 1:00 in the morning to get what we could get out, and then I guess the rest of it, we were out Monday. So I just, you know, it's, something happened, had never happened before, and hopefully won't happen again, but we, you know, we pride ourselves on getting out the, all of the appropriate documents to everybody, not just the council, but to the public on Friday, so that they have plenty of time to look at, look at all the agenda items and figure out what's important to them, so. But thank you. All right. Next up, city attorney report.
Yeah, I guess I'd try to provide some clarification to the newspaper article that came out last week regarding Apopka City Center and this apartment complex. I think also the applicant, well, not applicant, the potential applicant is here to also clarify. Just to clarify, I did pull the agenda item from the Orange County Commission, as well as heard the presentation of the commission on this item that was voted. Can show you, the commission video lasted all of like a minute 30 seconds. The decision that was rendered by the county was they awarded to five developers part of their affordable housing grants. Each developer was graded on a certain score, and then based on their scores is how they were ranked. The developer in question that's going to, you know, in question here for the city was, I think, ranked fourth, and were awarded a sum of money. This is a, basically, it's a financial assistance from the county to the developer to aid in the cost of construction for what is to be, what is deemed workforce housing. The county did not approve the use on city property. Like, there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. The city did not approve the use on this property. There have been no applications for submittal for review. Nothing has been approved by either the county or the city. This was basically the first step in a process for the developer to obtain financial assistance in order to provide what is deemed workforce housing. The city still has the opportunity to review an application, review a site plan, to discuss the matter, to see how compatible the use is with both the land development code, as well as the development agreement for the city center. That development agreement has been one that has been recently amended, as soon as last year, conducted the amendments to the land development, to the development agreement, so that whatever the final outcome will be, or the final renderings that'll be submitted by the city, staff will review it, it will go up the requisite channels in the city, and whatever the final product will be, will be consistent with both the land development code and the development agreement for city center. But to stress, the county did not approve a residential project in the city, and the city has not approved anything. Nothing's been approved. Everybody just kind of, everybody, to quote Aaron Rodgers, R-E-L-A-X, relax. The applicant is here to provide any further, sorry, the developer, because he hasn't applied. The developer is here to give some further clarification, as to also illustrate what is proposed for the site.
Ryan, we really appreciate you hanging out with us all afternoon. You know, learned more about Apopka than you ever wanted to know, but...
I know a lot about Apopka already, but I'd like to learn more. I'm Ryan Von Weller, Windover Housing Partners. We're based in Altamont Springs at 1105 Kensington Park Drive, so we're local. I've been coming to Apopka for a long time. My father has a business here in town as well, so very familiar, so I appreciate you guys having me, it's a pleasure. I wanted to come this evening, you know, Mr. Mayor, you and I spoke, invited me to come here and gave you just a little bit of informational background about who we are, what we do, and kind of what we're proposing, what we're looking at in the Apopka City Center. So we started working with Taurus on this site over a year ago, and coming up with kind of an overall plan about what type of product and what demographics and everything else we're trying to serve in the city of Apopka, and what we're trying to do to accomplish to make a successful development. So we've been at this, doing similar products all around the state of Florida, the southeast, over 30 years technically with our principal, Jonathan Wolfe, and over 20 years under the name Windover Housing. So we've got thousands of units, market rate, affordable workforce around the state of Florida and around the southeast as well. And one of the things I want to go through this evening is just to make sure everyone understands the difference between product types, right? So there's subsidized housing, well, this is not. Subsidized housing comes clearly from HUD, in addition to, you know, rent subsidies and subsidies for the development, where we are totally private sector, for-profit company that utilizes tax credit from the IRS in order to help us get equity to build workforce and affordable housing. So a lot of people get apprehensive when they hear the term low income, they hear the term subsidized. The nomenclature is different inside our industry, that is probably so nuanced that most people don't understand it. What we're doing here in Apopka City Center proposed is actually workforce housing up to 80% of the AMI of the area. And what we see in truly affordable is 60% AMI and lower, and what you see in low income is anywhere from 50% down to 22%. So Apopka City Center will incorporate all those bands, but all the way up to 80%, which is your workforce demographic as well, so.
And what's that, what's that number about, range? That, the 80% is what?
Yes, sir. I actually have that on the last time, and they're going to give that to you guys. It's a chart that's very wide, and I think we can broadcast to up there, but I did bring a copy of that for you guys to look at as well, so you can get a better understanding. So, and if you guys aren't familiar with what we do, we obviously have two different developments already existing in Apopka. We have Wellington Park on Thompson Road and Brixton Landing on 13th Street. So both of those are 60% AMI and lower. So both of those are 60% AMI and lower, right? So more of a truly affordable product type, whereas what we propose here at the city center, again, will encapsulate that additional 20% band as well, to get additional folks qualified that can live there and move into the city center as well. So, what we have, and this is highly conceptual, as was mentioned, we have not made application yet, we've had some very high-level discussions with your planning staff previously. We were awarded sale funding from the state of Florida earlier this year, as was mentioned as well. We are the recipient of additional monies from Orange County, as a part of their first initial tranche of housing trust fund monies, which we're very excited about as well. And so this is over a $40 million development, so, it's, uh, it's gonna be built well, it's gonna be built aesthetically pleasing, and of course, with your land development code and other stipulations as well. We are familiar, have looked at those, and we plan to meet most, if not all, of those as well, to our best of our ability. So the site plan, as you see here, I'm sure you guys kind of know the area, so I don't need to explain too much to you. Hard to see on here, but there's a gray line, there's a, an outline of the kind of purple area, and you'll see we're not going to build on that back area, which is the actual 2.8 acres, it's slopes, but it's also, we believe, a nice buffer between our use and then the existing more heavily residential in nature uses as well. Inside the purple line, I know you can't see it, but when you get a copy of this, you will be able to, you'll see the, the setback as demanded by code. And we are actually coming inside of that line significantly around the perimeter of the project. So, we're not pushing the envelope, we're not trying to squeeze a whole lot of product in here that otherwise wouldn't be possible. We believe this layout and this configuration really gives, you know, appropriate setbacks and viewsapes, not only for us, but for the surrounding uses and neighbors as well. It's 195 units, which zoning currently allows, again, so we're not looking for any variance on that, or any density increases. It is, and I believe it's mixed-use downtown zoning. Of course, we've got other things we know about as well, overlays and agreements as well, but the, the core zoning allows what we've proposed here at its core. So an elevation of the product type, you see, we just had this done a couple days ago, so I could share it with you guys. Again, this is very preliminary, subject to change. You'll see kind of similar aesthetics to Wellington, but again, we have proposed a four-story product here with interior air-conditioned corridors, elevated, so really a step up in terms of overall product type from the walk-up three-story that we've got at Wellington. Brixton, the senior development, is interior corridor, three stories, of course, that's age-restricted, so this Southwick will have a little bit different dynamic in terms of the product offerings, the clubhouse space, et cetera, to go more along with the family environment, but again, it is going to be interior corridored and elevated as well. Just, you know, to keep it brief, I got some other examples here. You're familiar with Wellington Park, this is 120 units, obviously, and I encourage you guys to reach out to me with any questions, but I'd be happy to get you a tour, if you haven't had one already, to kind of see this product. Obviously, it's right in your backyard, so it's easy for you guys to get to, so, happy to host you there. Take a look at kind of the interior finishes and just some general, general photos as well. Here's Brixton, which you're also familiar with, which, although not the city limits, is probably, you know, half a mile from here, I just, I went there before I came here this afternoon. This is Haley Park, built in conjunction with the VA over in Tampa, so we have a lot of coordination with VAS vouchers, different folks there, to help get a lot, it's right near Haley Park Hospital, so we work on that type of development as well. This is a larger product in metropolitan Atlanta that we're just opening, so we're working out of the state of Florida on similar product types as well. And this is in Longwood at the Sun Rail Station, this is age-restricted as well, but this is a four-story elevated product, similar in, in scope and size and elevation to what we would be doing at Southwick. And then Kenwood Place, which is another similar interior corridor product in Tallahassee, that we've had open for three or four years as well, and another example in Jacksonville. And this is our market rate product that we have at the Sun Rail Station in Longwood as well, which is 208 units, interior corridor, four stories. So again, I'm just trying to give you guys a kind of a sampling of what type of product we build, I know it's not crystal clear up there, but again, you will have a copy.
And where is, where is that one at?
That one's in the downtown Longwood at the train station. The actual front of that, you'll see right to the left of the first photo, is the train tracks. There's a second one right there.
And that's in Longwood? That, I've seen Wellington, I've seen Brixton, I'd like to see that one.
Yes, ma'am.
That one is your higher-end one, right?
That is. We have two at the Longwood Station, actually. One is affordable, age-restricted, and this is just a standard market rate.
Yeah, when you say age-restricted, it's...
55 and older.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, the, what, the Southwick is not age-restricted, what we're proposing here in Apocca is just, you know, not, doesn't have those cadets attached to it.
Okay.
So, that's really all I wanted to share with you guys tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, or...
So, just full disclosure, because we did speak today...
Yes, ma'am.
And I did get to speak, I get to, I got to meet Jonathan, Mr. Jonathan, a few years ago, and I remember spending a few hours with him, and that's where I learned what type of housing he built, and I, I remember saying to him that I was so happy to meet him, because I had never met anyone that, that built housing with a quality, you know, for, for, especially for workforce families, that it wasn't inferior. I've seen his product, I remember he showed me all his, his books and everything like that, and he, and he's very proud of being able to provide a top-quality housing product for workforce families. And I, I do know that about him, so I'm, I'm, I'm excited, I'm gonna go look at the Longwood.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and that brings up a good point. You know, we build high-quality product because we own and maintain these in perpetuity.
Yeah.
So we don't build these to sell them. Our, almost our entire portfolio, I've been working with Jonathan for close to 10 years, and, you know, him going back further than that, almost everything he's built, he still owns and operates.
And he still owns and operates, and that, and that is the truth.
And we have a management company, which I'm the broker and control that as well, so. We, we take care of it all, in-house.
Right. And I do, and I wasn't the commissioner back then, but I spent all this time with him, and I said to him, "Are you interested in Apocca?" And he, he at that time said he was.
Right. Yep, yeah, and obviously we are.
Yeah, that was a few years ago.
It'll be our third, third development here, so, you know, we're very familiar with the area, we like the area, and I'm sure you guys have seen, we've been selected for some other pretty high-profile projects recently also.
Right.
So we believe in our product type, we believe in our ability to execute and to make this a great development.
I imagine when I've sat in the planning and zoning board for Orange County.
Yeah, excellent.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just want to say, I remember when Thompson Road project was going up, and that's the first word that comes to my mind, is quality. And I've watched it over the years, wondering, will it maintain that? And I've seen that as well, so.
Much appreciated.
Pleased with that, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I, I'm gonna say that, I, I went by and took some pictures that I wanted to show, because likewise, a lot of times the developments are built and the builders walk away from them or sell them, and then they're not maintained. And so, I, I went by and took some pictures, and I just wanted to show that they are well-maintained, nicer landscape, the entrances just as well as those in Rock Springs Ridge or Emerson Park. And that's both at the one on Thompson Road and the one on 13th Street. And so, I, I'm proud of the product you're, you're building, and, and, and the way that you maintain and keep them looking good, both inside and out. And I think that's important to our, to our city, and this would be a, a welcome product here also in the city of Apocca.
Many thanks, and, and again, I really appreciate that, and it is, you know, important for us to maintain them, because we do own and operate them, so it, it reflects well on us if we hear that kind of feedback and if we take good care of our product types. I appreciate that very much.
Yes. Mr. Rebecca?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dispute quality of your product. What I would dispute is the location of affordable, or, as it was quoted in the paper, very low-income type of housing, and what we're trying to brand as a city center.
Sure.
Where you're trying to bring in, you know, the retail and commercial and things like that. So I'm just curious as to how it reconciles to our current developers' agreement and all that sorts of... This is the first time I've actually seen kind of a site plan and concept before we were even reviewing anything, so this is new to me.
We like to be at, you know, fast starters, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess how does that reconcile within our current developers' agreement in this area, talking about luxury market rate type of housing product versus affordable or very low-income?
Absolutely. So, a couple things to start with. You know, we believe that that extra 20% band makes us a workforce housing development, and it's certainly not a low-income housing development overall. Now, the low-income housing nomenclature is going to be eliminated at the federal level, and it's going to be replaced with more of an affordable housing nomenclature, because of kind of that stigma that it brings with it. But, you know, we are a firm believer that the product type and the price points that the 80% AMIs bring here is a market rate rent. So, up to about $1,500 to $1,600 for a three-bedroom is the rents here, and I provided you guys with a breakdown of the rent schedules and the income levels as well. I just, it's, I just got, I'm sorry, apologies for the short notice for me, but I did provide it, I think it's saved in your computer right there. So what, you know, what central Florida really suffers from is people that are rent burdened, right? So they're spending more than a third of their income on rent. And when you get folks into a more affordable rent structure, they have more disposable income. So, you know, we worked with Taurus on this for a long time, they understand it now. You know, if you can have someone pay 20% of their income and that, and instead of 33%, that leaves disposable income for them to spend elsewhere. So these are not folks that are unemployed, everyone that comes here will be employed or will have an income source, but, you know, it's, we think the demographic of the immediate area and what the city center's trying to accomplish complements our product well.
Yeah, and, and I guess it'll, we'll get to that point when we review the stuff. I mean, we had some conversations with Taurus, I guess, a year, two, two years ago, as the stuff going on further down Sixth Street, some affordable housing type of product, and it was almost to the detriment of them to be able to attract some of the brands that we wanted to see in that complex. So I'm just, I'm wondering where the shift is, in terms of now, it's, it's a benefit versus a detriment, so. And we'll get to those conversations when we get through the, through the process.
Yeah, I don't work for Taurus, you know, I'm a third party, but obviously work with them as a part of the, as the situation presented itself to us, so, can't speak for them.
Yeah, and that, that kind of moved the needle for me specifically, because they were objecting to something along those lines, then knowing, well, this is a different product, a little bit higher level, and still providing a workforce place.
Well, and I'd like to say that, you know, we, everybody always said that, you know, we need workforce house, we need workforce housing, but don't build it in my backyard. So, so then where do you put it? And, and I think we need to move away from the concept that we put these kinds of developments out in the boonies, where, where, where they're isolated. They need, they're human beings, and so they need to be treated like human beings, and they need to be put in an environment where they feel proud of who they are, and, and like you said, these are individuals that have jobs.
Yes, sir.
And if they're living in affordable housing, where they can afford to pay the rent, not spending it all on, on rent or mortgage, then they, yes, then they can go and spend money in the downtown center. And so, the, these are people that, individuals that are, are part of our society, and so we need to make them feel inclusive, is what I'm saying.
Yes, sir, and, you know, we're, we are always surprised to find when we open up a new community that most of the folks that move in are from within a mile or two of, of the existing area, right? So, you know, very few folks are imported, we do get them from different parts of, of the county, from even from out of county, out of state, whatever it was, especially with the senior product, where someone's gonna move mom and dad down, that they're taken care of, you know, to live there, but, you know, your neighbors, existing neighbors need this type of housing. All of central Florida needs it, and we're happy to be able to provide it in a quality fashion.
So, just... Ryan, while you're, we, you know you've got some slides, but we've got people maybe that are watching online, can you just give us some of the, the income criteria, so folks know kind of what that...
You wanna, can you put up on the screen?
Just cue up that one, if you, if you can, that would be...
He'll be, he'll come get it, sir.
Okay, yeah, I just, just so people know the range, because we're talking about workforce housing, which are teachers and firefighters and police officers. Yeah, but I just, but I want people to see the, the number, just so they, we all have a, a feel for what...
What's, what's interesting is with this extra 20% band, you really encapsulate a lot more folks, right? So, just gonna bring it up, but it's about 67, 68,000 is the top-in limit for a family to, you know, two, two adults, two kids. And you'll see this chart, it's, it's very confusing, so I apologize in advance, but comes from the federal government, so.
Well, one of the things that I had, when we spoke, was that, you know, we, we want to pride ourselves in live, work, and play in Apocca.
Right.
And so, when I look at all the products that we're building here, businesses, we have warehouses, we have Goya, we have Amazon, we're going to be bringing that workforce here, so we want to be able to encourage them not to be on the 429 or the 5, 451.
Right.
If they can live in our community, they can go to work, because, right now, I don't know how Amazon and Goya's doing with employees, but then we also have, and I, I want to give credit to Cooperstown, I call it Cooperstown, but he also provides a lot of employment, and that's a workforce.
Sure.
And so, we're, we're building up all of this, so we have, at the same time, we have to be able to provide a, a, a type of housing that we can actually say, live, work, and play. Now, the one interesting thing that I, I, you know, you had said, you're working with Taurus over a year ago, and over a year ago, I wasn't here, so obviously, when they kind of renegotiated the development plan with Taurus, Taurus failed to tell us that they were looking, that they were working with you. And so, I, I just feel bad, because, you know, I, I don't want Jonathan to be thrown under the bus, but, you know, if we can at least ease some of the, the concerns for our neighboring residents, that this isn't, and, and we spoke, you're right about low-income and Section A, it, it just has such a negative connotation, it always comes back as, this is not a working family, they're just kind of, you know, they're just not working, they're not part of the workforce, and that's not what we want to create.
Sure. A couple interesting points you brought up there that I'll add some different thoughts to.
Right.
We just did a study with Lynx, or Lynx provided us a study, because we're working on a, a major project in the Taurus corridor. 75,000 employees come to the iDrive corridor every day, and a very large percentage of them commute more than two hours to get there, public transportation. So think about having to be somewhere at 8:00 in the morning, getting up at 6, getting back at 10, just to get to a 15-hour, $15 an hour, $20 an hour job, it's very difficult. So, these urban infill, as, as Commissioner Smith mentioned, having housing close by to the employment centers and what's going on, on your, on your 429 corridor and, and around that area is, is critical. So we, obviously, are firm believers in its viability.
Okay. Okay, um, just a couple things I want to kind of, to clear the air on. First of all, I was, I was the county commissioner that approved Wellington Park.
Yes, sir.
Just so you know that.
Yeah.
I'm sure you remember. Second, I, I just want you to, to, to let the audience out there know, because there's, the innuendos that I have, I had approved this affordable housing complex along the way, and just want you to publicly, you know, announce that I had no idea that there was affordable housing, workforce housing, anything. And not that I'm against it, but, but there, there are all the people out there, the naysayers, saying that I have cut this secret deal with an affordable housing developer, and I would have no reason to, to know that you guys were negotiating with Taurus on an affordable housing, workforce housing complex.
Right, I mean, you know, we worked with staff to get some very preliminary things assessed, so we could submit to the state of Florida.
Sure.
Um, that's as far as we've gotten, because until you are the recipient of an award, it's really all you have to do. So there's not a whole lot, you know, that's not us, you know, trying to work behind the scenes or anything else, but, you know, now is the time, typically, thank you for inviting me, because I think it's appropriate, but now is the time we come forward and start working with staff at a, at a much more detailed level, and of course, with the commission as well.
But, but I mean, all my, my point is that I had, I had no prior knowledge, this was until I saw it in the paper.
Right, no, you and I never did not meet, you know, in secret.
Okay, so you didn't meet with me, Taurus didn't meet with me, Orange County did not meet with me about a workforce housing project at this town center. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, I have no idea what Orange County did or did not do.
Okay.
Commissioner Moore was here and unfortunately, she didn't pick up her grandkids. She can speak to that certainly. I can't. But yeah, again, you and I have not made a deal in the sunshine for sure.
All right. Well, it would be perfectly fine to talk, but I'm just saying we haven't.
Oh, no, we spoke, but not, yeah.
Not prior to the article on the Apopka chief. I just want to, you know, just clear the air now. Now it gets to the point where we, you know, we have a developers agreement that was signed before I got here. And that part of the agreement was there before I came into office as it relates to luxury apartments. And so because I don't want to go any farther, if, I mean, we probably have to look at the developers agreement. And Michael, as you read it, how do you see, do we have to do this project? Do we have to amend the developers agreement?
Well, the developers agreement includes in its permitted uses, it does allow for multifamily residential. Then it has, in parentheses, non-subsidized and market rate. That's what's listed in the permitted uses. There is then another section within the development agreement in one of the other exhibits, which has certain standards for multifamily, which is where luxury is, luxury type or luxury style is listed. So the question becomes whether theoretically, can the applicant come in and make an argument and provide enough evidence for you as a council to consider that they constitute market rate? Because it's based on that they constitute market rate and non-subsidized in order to fall within what is defined in the current developers agreement for the property.
The non-subsidized part, we talked about already, and that's a pretty much a bright line as defined by the federal statutes. And I think I sent you, Mr. Verr, or maybe I have it on here, I can get you guys a copy of some studies about that. That's a Section 8 versus Section 42 issue. Section 8 is subsidized housing, Section 42, which governs the tax credit program is non-subsidized by definition. So we can meet that one. And your other requirements of luxury, I think luxury is a subjective term. However, the items that are in there, balconies, walk-in showers, walk-in closets, we typically provide those anyway. So I don't think we're going to see a significant deviation in any, anything really. And we've got some balconies on the product type that I showed you as well.
Yeah, along those lines. It's going to depend, I can't render an opinion now, it's because everything is. But it's going to depend on can an applicant submit sufficient information, sufficient evidence for you as a council to consider? And then deem whether what is presented and the application that is presented, is it consistent with the developers agreement?
Was that a developments agreement that was recently renegotiated?
There were some amendments to it. Those were the amendments that were done in June. This section was the provision in regards to multifamily residential was not amended. The amendments concerned, there was concerning on certain obligations in regards to a property owners association for the overall project. There was also maintenance for the fountain.
I'm sorry, maintenance for the what?
For the fountain that's located in the roundabout as well as certain common area. And then also there was the, it was codified in the agreement, the payment for the impact fees for the hotel. That amount was codified. And then there was, there was a actual enforcement mechanism for if they fail to pay the impact fees by, that was December 31st of 2020, that there would be ramifications. And if I, because I have not been asked to enforce anything, I believe the impact fees were paid. They were dragging their feet on paying those impact fees. So the amendment, we got them to actually pay them when they were due. There was also an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, which governs the overall properties, which shortened the amount of time that Taurus had to sell the properties and also gave the city some other, some additional authority and powers. So that if Taurus did not abide by the agreements in the purchase and sale agreement, that the city would be able to either buy back the properties at that price that it was sold. Or also, there were also some other penalties that Taurus would have to pay an increased price for certain properties as time progressed if nothing was done. So those were the amendments to it. But those, the 2020 amendments to the developers agreement did not affect the residential component of the developers agreement.
Did he, did Taurus have an obligation? Because Taurus has been working with Wendover for over a year. Did Taurus have an obligation to at least come back to the city and let them know that they were working with Wendover?
The developers agreement does not specifically enumerate such an obligation on the part of Taurus.
Okay, that's interesting.
And what year was that agreement put into place?
The original agreement?
Yeah.
Oh.
2014, 2013.
That I can't, off the top of my head.
2016, okay.
That was before I got here, as much as I know.
Okay. So, okay. So we're at the point, I just wanted, I'm glad that Ryan came. I'm glad, you know, that Michael, we're able to talk. I mean, so the question is, I think, I think they deserve an answer quicker. You know, I don't want to get down the road and then all of a sudden, you know, you spent $300,000 on a, you know, on a full design. And then we, you know, based on the agreement, developers agreement, we don't think you qualified to build it. I don't think that's fair to anybody that we don't, we don't at least clear up. Either clear it up or just say, hey, thanks, but no thanks. I think that we're at the point where it's, you know, but the developers agreement is muddy at best. And maybe you think not, but.
Yeah, we're very confident that we'll be able to meet that, you know, obviously with the non-subsidized housing being the highest hurdle to overcome. The rest of them seem to be design-based, and I think we can accomplish that.
And if you don't build, you have to get the money back. Is that correct?
Give the money back to the state.
And to the county.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that money is not drawn down until the project is ultimately approved. That's correct.
Okay, awesome. Any other last questions for?
Let's let him keep it, you know, I do that too.
Well, Ryan, thank you. Thank you for hanging out with us all afternoon and into the evening and appreciate it. Thank you.
You know where my contact information is. I'll reach out anytime with any questions. Pleasure.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
And you say they have those charts, so they can send them to us?
I believe you downloaded them.
Yes, he's saying yes.
All right. So if you need anything else, over your job.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just interesting, I just, this is the Martin Ridge Luxury Apartments. The one-bedroom, one-bath, 1950, 1,500 to 1,950. Two-bedroom, 1,800 to 2,300. And three-bedrooms, 21 to 2,800. So that's Martin Ridge, which are market rate. Yeah, that's crazy.
You wonder what their, what is their occupation in the?
Occupancy rate, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
I don't know. Yeah. Okay, anything else? Is that good? Michael, you?
That's it for me.
All right, okay. I'm going to try to get to this pretty fast. The quick Stony Brook, the golf course, you know, we had Dylan come out. That's on the website now. If you want to take a look, the video is on there as well as his talking point. So if you want to go on there and see how Stony Brook West did it, not only for Rock Springs Ridge residents, but as well as the folks from Arrow Estates.
Yeah, he did send me, and I asked, and he did send me the copy of the survey that he had, that the residents received.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so here, we got a couple of, some of the things that were brought up. See, where am I pointing? Where am I pointing, I wonder? What is that? There we go. So I just wanted to go over, one of the commissioners had brought up some things that needed to be looked at. So just wanted to go through here and some of these items. One of the things we talked about, Cleveland Street not being mowed, so we spent four hours, got that mowed. Talking about whether we wanted to put the thermal plastic down the road of Cleveland Street, it's about $15,000. We've got a, you know, the road survey now is finished, but we just got to tweak it. So we will have some roads that we know will be in the, in the next year's work plan that we want to repave. And Cleveland, we think will be one of the top ones. So, you know, we can spend $15,000 to put a stripe down the road. And then if we come back in three months and pave over it and then spend another $15,000, we can, we can do that. If that's what, what the staff and the commission would like to do. Spent 10 minutes cleaning up the entrance to Public Works. We got all of the areas around Station Street cleaned up, mowed, tree trimmed. Took about 12 hours. The VFW community, all the landscaping, get the, got the hedges. It's not even really, it was never designed to be a hedge, but we hedge it and took us four hours to get that done. Old Little League Fields, El Martin, got them mowed, trees removed, staff time, took a couple of hours. Intersection of San Piper and Park Avenue, striping, restriping was completed, staff time, just took 30 minutes to get that done.
I'm glad they got that done there.
Yeah. The fountain at McGee Street, we're talking about that being landscaped. Just want you to, I want to highlight the date there, the PO. If you look at that PO, I can't even read it. Okay, well, anyway, before, before the commissioner brought that to our attention, so just so you know.
Commissioner Becker, we can all, we can all, we don't have to guess. It was me.
Okay, we got, here's some street banners that also were POs before. And we've got two of them, got a third one that's already in the hopper to be, should be delivered anytime soon. Medium at Park Landscape, a couple hours staff time. The pothole at Northwest is like an inch, inch and a half deep, took us an hour and a half staff time. One of the things that in the, in the budget we approved this year is this Raytech infrared heater so that we can make our potholes last longer and be, they're a smoother patch. So we're really, we're really excited to get this machine in. It's about a $35,000 machine, which should make all of our pothole repairs a lot, a lot better, a lot cleaner, a lot, lasts a lot longer. Northwest Rec Sign Complex Landscape, a couple hours. Note that we didn't, we haven't done anything around the one at Northwest because we've got, the digital sign should be in within the next month. Also, the digital sign at Kettland Nelson Park within the next month. And at that point, we'll landscape around those signs. Landscaping and signage updates, 20 hours to get all that cleaned up. And just to, just to kind of reiterate, maybe we've kind of forgotten, but due to COVID, you know, we had the inmate crews less than the six months of the year. We spent, the contract was for $135,000. And we, obviously, we've saved $70,000, although we didn't have their work here in the city of Apopka. In the new budget we just passed, we've added three full-time employees at a cost of $150,000 with benefits. So to replace those two crews that we had. So we, you know, we feel like we're in a pretty good, a pretty good, pretty good spot. Just a couple of pictures, the building on Lush Road, here's 2014, plenty of graffiti. 2016, plenty of graffiti. 2018, graffiti plus water in the, in the well. And if you want to get that repainted, the first, we've only gotten one bid for repainting that whole building, $129,000.
Is it still functional or is it?
We store traskins in there.
Oh, okay.
So if y'all want to spend $129,000, or maybe we get it for less, we can, we can absolutely paint it. Realizing that graffitiists love nothing more than a white building to graffiti on. So that's those, those couple of issues, thought everybody would like to know. Had the great privilege to go to AIF, they have a water form every year. And got to go to represent the city of Apopka in our onsite program. Sat, was on the program with some folks from DEP, some folks from St. John's Water Management, another group out of Lake Jessup doing some pretty innovative stuff. And so was really proud and honored to be, to represent the city, to talk about onsite and how we were able to reduce the nitrogen going into the Wekava Springs area. So. And last, I always like to end on a high note. Had a great event Saturday, last Saturday night, the Camp Weewah, the Friends of Camp Weewah came out. And we had about 20 of us were out there all day Saturday, putting deck sealer on. They paid for the deck sealer. Then we had a great program that night. And we had a videographer out there kind of going over a lot of the things that they do, they've done in the former camps, some of their songs and chants, which are really, really special. So we're trying to capture those. So as we get into, you know, next summer, we'll have some things that we have to have. We can keep and carry on. One of the things that was really neat, I've got some pictures I'll share with you next time, is they had, they took pond front and you took the stick off the pond front. And they would drill a hole in the top of it, in the middle of it, and they put a candle. And so what you do is they would light the candle in the pool. And they would push the candle and the stick across the pool, and you would make a wish for, you know, something good to happen for you or your family or whatever. And it was really, what a great, you know, very quiet, very, you know, surreal kind of moment. So it was really a great, a great, a great night, great day with the Friends of Camp, Camp Weewah. And they're looking to raise enough money to build us a playground out there. So they've really been they're going to be a great help in us as we, as we move Camp Weewah forward.
Was that, was that a city-led event?
What's that?
Was that a city event?
No, just Camp Weewah, Friends of Camp Weewah.
Yeah, I would love to participate in those events. I'll have to reach out to them. Hopefully, the entire invite goes to the entire council next time. That would be fun to participate.
You got it. All right, with that.